Okay, it is 2:30. We are going to call the Salina City Commission Study Session to Order. Before we turn it over to city staff, I did want to make a comment that we do have quite a few presenters today, and we're going to ask that you limit your comments to 15 minutes or less. And the primary reason is we want to give everybody the same amount of time. So I will look to city staff to see who wants to start.
Yeah, we've got a couple of housekeeping items. We'll try to keep it short. Debbie Pack, looks like she's online, but she is out of the office on other business. So Rick Welch, our Deputy Finance Director, will be leading the conversation today. There are some recent additions. The Chamber of Commerce had some additional information provided that we'll go over. And then Salina Grace was not listed as part of the original group. And I know we've had conversations. I don't recall whether that was intentional or unintentional on our part. It may very well have been recognition that we entered into an agreement with them previously and kind of had predetermined their funding level. But I had a chance to talk to Chad and assure him that if we run out of time today, we'll find a time slot for him to get before you in the future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rick.
Good afternoon, Rick Welch, Deputy Finance Director. Today's study session is the City of Salina's outside agency request. Provided ahead of time is some historical operational information, and each of the five agencies will come forward and discuss more in depth, allowing for questions after each presentation. Because we have added a fifth presentation, I want to get right into it. First off is Trell Grinter of OCCK.
Hi there. Trell Grinter, and you should have a presentation similar to this. Thank you for putting it up on the screen. All right. Thank you so much for letting us be here. OCCK Transportation provides access and accessibility to all kinds of people. Any access that you need to medical, nutrition, employment, we are there for you. So, next slide. Our vision for transportation is driven with commitment and respect. We venture out to ensure the independence of our passengers for all communities we serve. We go through this vision statement with all of our drivers, and we really target it in the very first days of working with us, with our brand-new drivers. You have to have a passion for what you are going to do. If you're going to step up and drive a CityGo bus, or our on-demand paratransit vehicles, we ask them, what words stand out to you? A lot of people pick respect, driven, because who doesn't like to just drive and see the weather, see the sunset? And passengers, of course. A lot of our team really, really gets involved because they have a passion to give back. Now, the one that stuck out to me was communities. Now, OCCK is built on serving the community. I thought of it, okay, well, we're serving Salina, all different areas in Salina. And somebody pointed out, Trell, that means inclusion to me. We are helping a very diverse population of Salina have access to their wants and needs. And as I was writing this, I was just thinking, man, we're helping our Salina community. So it's amazing that my team is taking it even farther than when we originally wrote this vision statement. Okay? Why we do what we do, like I said, it is for our community. It is for our passengers. Every day, we strive to value our passengers. There's a few testimonials of how public transportation has changed people's lives. I got a recent email from a passenger. A Mr. Lee was the driver for the day. He was professional and courteous. The big plus is, he made the trip look easy, as he frequently goes to KC on medical trips each week. I truly appreciate his help and wanted to pass along what a great driver and person he was for the day. I truly appreciate this service, super helpful to someone like me. Another one, when I decided to quit driving, I knew I would need a dependable way to get back and forth from dialysis, especially being on a budget. I was thrilled when I found that OCCK would be the most reasonable and able to provide this. They have always ensured that I get where I need to go, no matter what. Thank you, OCCK. And then Lawrence is the best driver out there. He is patient with me when I get on with my walker and always has a smile. Thank you for keeping me safe when riding. Thank you for all that you do. So that is just evidence that truly reinforces why we do what we do every single day. Hopping into the numbers a little bit, our paratransit on-demand service. So you have from 2016 up until 2022. This past year, we gave 64,000 total rides in 2022, and 47,000 of those are focused on a Salina. Maybe they're from Salina, or headed to Salina to shop, have a medical appointment and such. In 2021, that number was 36,000. You guys, 11,000 more people had access to Salina, and anything that they were wanting, needing, entertainment, shopping, medical needs, nutrition, that is an amazing number. Hopping into CityGo. Now, COVID, this is, the fixed routes is where COVID really took the zinger. You've heard me say it since 2020. I'm not going to stop reminding until we get that curve headed back even more consistently. But in 2021, we gave 174,000 rides, and we are already seeing a higher number, almost 200,000 rides in 2022. The first four months of 2023, we are 17,000 rides more. Oh, sorry, I said 13,000 rides more than we were last year. So we are seeing that increase of ridership. I say, I lean into the people that we are giving access to truly need that service. And in the paratransit, that is providing an option for people who need more of that one-on-one service, need to have that personal care attendant with them. So we're truly giving a ton of rides, but that's what you're seeing a little bit of the difference in the two services there. Regional fixed routes in 2022, our 81 connection, we gave 2,500 rides, which is great, as it's about to begin its sixth year of service. And then CanConnect, the connection between Salina and Solomon, almost 100% employment focus. We have had a couple of people hop on for the ride to shop, or to just explore. But that is, in its first about six months of service, was 1,770. So that is killer for a first, first year of service. We're already seeing an increase in those numbers as well. Okay, now where is everybody going? 26% of our rides is for employment purposes, whether that be work, skills training and coaching, or interviews. 41% has a medical focus, and a lot of people think that they can only take OCCK because they need to get to a medical appointment. So we are about to launch these postcards. If anybody says, oh, my gosh, you do that, or, oh, I only use you to get to the hospital, we are going to pass these out to increase. Well, we can get you to work, too. We can get you to the movie theater. We can get you downtown. We can get you access to anything you want and need. So you'll be seeing those around town. And then 32%, that feels a little chunky to me, because it incorporates nutrition, education, residential. Being general public transportation, people don't have to tell us where they're going. We can make assumptions, and that's the numbers that you're seeing. If you're telling me you're going to Salina Regional, that kind of makes sense that you're going for a medical purpose, whether that be to visit somebody or to have an appointment of your own. But sometimes you could be going to work at a grocery store, or going to shop for food. So we have to kind of make smart choices as dispatchers in that area. I am working on making that number even more definable. But the software that we currently have, it is as good as it gets at the moment. So if you have any questions or want to see a breakdown, I am more than happy to chat with you about that. All right, can't forget about the bikes. In 2022, Salina averaged 90 rides per month. And right now, we are enjoying Bike Month, so make sure you get out and enjoy one of those free rides. I don't know if anybody biked to work on May 19th, but it was a gorgeous day. I was hoping that it wasn't going to rain. And next slide. All right, and I have to celebrate one more time, and I'm almost wearing the exact same outfit as the pictures up there. That's kind of silly. But this is one of the proudest moments that my team and I have. We got some really big names in transportation to recognize Salina and what we are doing here. The amount of commitment that Salina has made to public transportation is amazing, and this event put us on the national map for that. All right, what's next for us? I've been talking a lot about microtransit. That is like a Uber, Lyft-type version of paratransit on-demand. People would have the ability to use an app, or still call and schedule their ride, and that uses software to get people where they're going. It would delegate the driver, a little bit different than a dispatcher sitting behind a desk. Fixed route software, once again, the data on where are people going, I really want to continue defining that information for you. So fixed route software will help us with ons and offs, how many people are needing access to the lift, how many people are taking the stairs, what are our most popular ons and offs. And then we could even have automated announcements. We've even thought we could do a tour of Salina with those automated announcements. If you pass a geolocation, it can announce something interesting about the city. So there's no limit to what we can do with that fixed route software. Mobility hubs, that's just a fancy way of saying zhuzh-ing up our stops. How do we make them even more recognizable? How do we make them more accessible? How do we make it easier to navigate Salina? Number four is a route redesign and edits. I've got KU finishing up a feasibility study for us, and based on their recommendations, we will be coming back with, how can we tweak the routes? How can we make it even more accessible? How can we get to different parts of Salina faster, easier, more streamlined? And then looking into 81 connection Saturdays, getting people access to come shopping in Salina, getting access to appointments and work here on Saturdays. All right, and I'm going to introduce Patrick Wilarious, and he is going to walk us through the budget.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Patrick Wilarious. I'm the CFO of OCCK. I think, Rick or Debbie, probably in your package, you have a copy of our fiscal year '24 funding request. I can go over pretty much some of the items that is causing the increase, in which, if you notice through my budget proposal, it is a pretty sizable increase compared to previous years. Again, this budget reflects only services that affect Salina. OCCK is probably the most diverse provider within the state of Kansas, but this budget only reflects the items that are associated with transportation within Salina. There are a number of factors that work into this increase. Of course, inflation, of course, is one of them. Driver wages, which is a big concern of ours, is a major expense to us. All of our drivers are CDL licensed with passenger endorsement. Currently starting wage for a driver is $16. If you look at the city's Salina wage rate, and the county's wage rate for CDL drivers, that is under, we are paying under that. So the fiscal year '24 budget request includes raising our minimum, our starting wage from 16 to 17. Second part of the increase is due to the variance within the fuel. We really got caught shorthanded, or not shorthanded, but really got caught in fiscal year '22 with the price of fuel. The contract we have with the city and the contract we have with KDOT is a fixed contract. We have to provide this service with the amount of money that's allocated by both KDOT and the city of Salina. There is no, if we exceed our budget, the cost of operating this service is 100% of OCCK's cost. In fiscal year '22, we subsidized public transportation at $215,000. Majority of that was because of the cost of fuel and driver-related issues. Also, we're beginning to get an older fleet, for some reason. I don't know who dropped the ball, the pandemic, I think, where basically production of the vehicles that we use were shut down. Now, it's a nationwide problem, the demand for the type of buses we use, bigger and smaller. It's a large waiting list, which means we are operating with older buses. We tried to have a pretty good replacement plan, but in 20, the pandemic kind of shot that. So obviously, we're paying more money for repairs and maintenance. That is probably the biggest, the three major factors that constitute the increase that we're asking for. Again, we're asking for $947 and some change. What worked out, that Debbie and I worked out in the past, was it's kind of a cost agreement. It cannot exceed, our request cannot exceed 947,000. If our operating cost exceeds that, that's 100% on us. But if it's less, the city gets a credit for that amount. And I think in 2023, or 2022, one of those years, actually, the city did not have to pay the total amount of the allocation. So a lot of information that, and it is, I understand, it is a fairly large increase, but I think we have justification for that. So, that being said, any questions for Trell and I would be more than happy to answer them.
Is the increase, primarily for increased cost to deliver the same basic service, or is much of that increase for new services?
Yes, we're not, what Trell looked at, some of our plans, is not part of this budget. It's just to keep the current operation going. Again, the only major increase would be increase in our starting wage. We have 60-some, 70 drivers, so it does affect, the whole public transportation department is like 90-some employees out of OCCK's total of 300 employees. So it's a pretty big single department. So, but 60-some drivers would be affected by, would buy the wage increase. My goal, and the long-term goal, is to get drivers' wages to at least 18. Again, right now, for fiscal year '24, I'd like to get them from 16 to 17. So.
You said you got 70 drivers?
Yes, full-time, part-time, yeah.
Okay. Are you having issues retaining them and hiring people?
I can give Trell credit. She does a wonderful job of hiring people. We haven't had, we haven't had that big of a problem. Retention is not a huge problem. I think, you know, we have, OCCK has really good benefits, so that's certainly part of it. I think it's a really good place to work. I don't, do we have turnover? Of course, we do. But it's a very, but it's a very low, it's a very low percentage.
I was just surprised.
We put a lot of time, effort, and expense into drivers. We have a regiment of training that they all have to go through. Again, they're required to have a CDL, on top of a lot of training courses. Before we put them out in the bus, there's at least a month to six weeks that they are trained.
Back to your fuel contract. That's with KDOT?
Okay, we submit our best estimate, the KDOT. The thing with KDOT's budget is, is for fiscal year, I'll go back to '23, fiscal year '23, we submit our budget to KDOT in October of '22. So it's, there's a long period of time before we submit our budget and the actual contract takes effect. With the city, it's on the calendar year, so it's a lot more manageable. So we really...
So I guess my question, sir, is, do you buy the fuel on contract? Because I always see the buses filling up Casey's.
No, we have a contract with Casey's that we get a certain gallon percentage discount, not much. But, you know, generally, we like Casey's. There's other opportunities. But the geographical location of the Casey stores make it convenient for us. There's five of them. It covers all of our routes. So it's just, it's just easy. So, yeah.
Real quick, one question, and then we need to get on to the next one. The para-fees, is that a fee that's charged to the individuals that use the paratransit?
Yes.
Okay.
It's $2.
What's that?
$2 a ride.
$2 a ride is what's charged, okay.
Now, we have, which ADA requires, and since Salina has a fixed route service, to ride the paratransit services, there is a form you have to fill out. You have to qualify. So if not, if you can't ride CityGo for anyone, the fixed route service for anyone's service, that you put in an application. We certainly look at that application, and we...
And then the SRHF, that's the Salina Regional Health Foundation, and that, just, those funds go just for the para, correct?
The men of, or men of van services.
Men of van, okay. Okay. Is that fee fixed by the state, the $2? Is the $2 fee set by the state, or just...
No, it's set by us.
Is that $2 one-way, or $2 round-trip?
One-way.
$2 one-way?
It's based upon, since we have a fixed route service in Salina, we have to base it upon that fee. So it's basically the same.
I'm going to look at city staff, because we're not, we're not going to probably have time today to make decisions. So we'll just hear, and then we'll have to have another...
We'll bring all this back for discussion as part of the budget. We're not cutting any checks or sending anybody home with any cash today.
Okay, no checks out, okay.
I totally understand that.
Okay.
If you do have any more questions, too, you can always reach out to Patrick.
Yeah, we'll get, what we'll do, if we have any other questions, we'll get them to city staff, so they'll come to you all at once. Okay? Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your support. Thank you for your past support. So, thank you.
Next up, we will have Renee Duxler from Salina Chamber.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Thanks for having us here. Renee Duxler, President and CEO of the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce. Staff is handing out some things for you to be able to look at as we do our presentation. Happy to be here today to present on the division of the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, which, of course, most of you know as Visit Salina. I do have two of our staff with us today, Tiffany Benin and Joanne McClure, and they'll be presenting later on their specific components of Visit Salina. Ordinarily, you would see Sylvia Rice here before you, the Director of Visit Salina. She is out on medical leave today. So unfortunately for you, you have me today to kick this off. As I mentioned, Sylvia is our Director, Tiffany is Sports and Special Events Markets Manager, and then Joanne is Conventions Military and Ag Markets Manager. Next slide, please. I think all of you are very aware of this ratio, and how the transient guest tax breaks down, but just as a review real quick of where that transient guest tax money goes. And of course, Visit Salina sees 3% of that 7.5% that comes back. Next slide, please. Our preliminary budget, this was submitted to City Finance Department some weeks ago, and it was based on the first quarter transient guest tax that we received back. Since then, we have now received second quarter's transient guest tax. First quarter was about 28% more than we had budgeted, or were expecting for the first quarter. Second quarter was around 28% less. And so, those of you, and I think all of you have been through a couple cycles of this now already, a lot of this is kind of putting our finger up in the wind, and seeing which way it is blowing that day, as far as what the budget looks like. And trying to predict transient sales tax, what we just, what we have is the current data in front of us, and that continually shifts as well. So this budget may change, and most likely will change, as we kind of move forward into 2024. If we don't continue to see gains in transient guest tax, or meet our proposed budget, then we will want to shift those up and have those conversations. So what you see in front of you is certainly not necessarily what will happen for 2024. I'm going to talk a little bit about advertising and marketing before handing it over to staff. Visit Salina markets through a number of, through a number of different mediums. We do print publications, social media, and digital marketing, television, as well as billboards. We do not target within Salina, because we are trying to attract visitors outside of our community. And so, most of the people in this room don't regularly see Visit Salina ads or advertising. So we do always just kind of like to share that a little bit, just so you all can see kind of what some of that looks like as we're out there. I'm going to have Jacob show a 30-second video real quick, that is an example of a television ad that would get aired throughout, usually Kansas, within Western, and some of the Wichita region.
To the 67401 recently, then you haven't been to Salina. Make Salina your new getaway with a revitalized downtown, shopping, new murals, the sculpture tour, music and theater, museums, and the zoo. Fun for all ages. Tasty food experiences from hometown favorites to one of our new restaurants. You'll fall in love with the new 67401. Plan your stay and visit salinak s.org.
So that's just an example, again, of a 30-second television ad, but that reminds some of those ads also. Some of those ads also run on social media as well. You have in front of you a Women's Day magazine. I know you all will get benefit out of that. But tabbed in that magazine is an ad that is currently running both in the Kansas City and Oklahoma City markets, specifically advertising River Fest and the Smoky Hill River Festival coming up. Or maybe it's good housekeeping. I apologize. But you do have a magazine in front of you that shows some of that print publication. This is also a print ad that will be going out in Kansas Magazine. As you can see, specifically, advertising for the KKOA Car Show, as well as Boom Salina. Print advertising is a great way for us to get events information out, because it is very time-sensitive, so we can kind of put some of that stuff that isn't necessarily evergreen out in print publications. Real quick, talking a little bit about digital advertising, a lot of work that goes into this, but we do see a good return on investment with our digital advertising. I always say people are usually on their phones, and that's the best way to reach people. And so we are reaching them through display ads. Typical display ads run anywhere between 0.11 and 0.5% average for that click... Typical display ads run anywhere between point eleven and point three, five percent average for that click-through rate, which is essentially when people actually click on the ad when they see it. Our arts and cultural generated a high, highest CTR of one point one-five percent, which is better than average. And then, interestingly enough, the men age group of twenty-five to thirty-four was the most engaged demographic with a three point eight-three percent click-through rate. That's not something we typically see a lot of, but it's great to be reaching a, a new demographic for us, so we'll take it. Facebook ads running around average at a point ninety percent click-through rate. Women fifty-five to sixty-four were the most engaged in that group. And then when you look at Google Ads or search ads, those usually, that average is about a three point one-seven percent. We're going really strong with a point, four point six-eight percent or higher within the search ads. So those ads seem to be performing really well and getting to demographics that we would like to see. Next slide, please. These are examples of billboards. We have billboards located throughout the state, two north, two south, two to the east, and two to the west of us on one thirty-five and I-70. The first one on top obviously is very focused on, on the Boom Festival and an event. That's something that we, we do a lot of over at Visit Salina, is helping our events with visitor travel and, and into the region. The one on the bottom is a less, less specific, but is highlighting the murals that we have downtown and encouraging people to come downtown. These murals can get changed out fairly regularly. They're vinyl skins, essentially. There are plans to do some of those less specific murals or less specific billboards around museums, dining, and other attractions. But again, another way for us to reach an audience across, across the state. So with that, I'm going to bring Joanne up here to talk about conventions and meetings.
Good afternoon. First of all, thank you, every one of you that's up here giving welcomes to our conventions and, and events that we host. So I always ask the mayor's office to give some kind of a welcome, which we have coming up pretty soon. So I think you have something on your inbox, so thanks for that. Conventions, meetings, first slide. Last year, this is 2022, roughly fifty-eight hundred delegates that we could count that were actually heads and beds, which were hotel stays, and the economic impact for visitor spending was two point four, roughly. Next slide is the government and military. So last year was a big military year. The Jaded Thunder event exercise is every other year unless something falls through and we get that extra additional year, which we're not having this year. So just two really big exercises last year, including the Jaded Thunder. They're here for multiple days and weekends. And the personnel, obviously, that's a big influx of people over a period of a few days. And that, just the visitor spending for them is eight point six mil. And that doesn't include anything that happens out at the airport authority. So jet fuel, hangar space, all of that. So that's just basic visitor spending. One thing I really want to highlight this year is the agricultural events. Equafest did sign a five-year contract. We just finished, we just started the, the fifth year. So this is the first year of five that they just hosted. And just this year, in 2023, not counting what's happening in the future, we're already over two million in economic impact for just the ag events. And we're counting on the attendees. Anything between the Farm Expo and Equafest and some other smaller horse shows that have already happened, there's a significant amount of people that are coming to town just for that. The meetings, I've just kind of highlighted what's going on already just this spring. And the double asterisks are some of the ag events that are just conventions, meetings, small conferences. And I wanted to highlight on the next slide, the twenty-three highlights, which was Equafest. And you get to see the numbers of what they're bringing in for economic impact, for visitor spending. So Mid-America Farm Expo and the Small Shetland Pony and Mini Horse Show. A lot of these ag events, some of them are over a weekend time that are bringing families. So it's a different kind of expenditure when you bring a family, unless you're, you know, it's different than if you're at a convention. It's a, it's a whole different thing. So we're still trying to figure out how the ag market works in this community. Obviously, it is, it's bringing in a, a lot of play. We're getting a lot of phone calls and some new site visits. So look forward to letting you guys know what's going to happen in the future with that. On the next slide, Renee had mentioned a little bit about a blip. We're a little bit through the first quarter and finding a change in April. I can attribute that to the catch-up of 2020 and 21. All the conferences that didn't happen, that moved into 21 and 22, they doubled up. So that's the blip that we're seeing from the spring. So people didn't get, their meeting planners didn't get the same dates that they always wanted last year, because everything was already booked, because people in 2020 were moving forward. So we doubled up. There were, there were times that some of our convention spaces were full thirty days out of the month, because they had to juggle some dates. So we're hopefully trying to come into a platform of where the new normal, if you even say that anymore, whatever this looks like for conferences. So again, the very first slide was smaller meetings. They're doing lots of Zoom. So every, the whole dynamic of conferences have changed just a little bit, but everybody still wants to get back together. So, all right, I'm going to, Tiffany has a lot to say, so I'm going to let her take over.
All right, go ahead and move on to the next slide. Hello, good afternoon. All right, and one more slide. All right. Just to give you an idea of 2022 and what types of sports and events, or what happened in the sports and events market in Salina, we had sixty-five events that we worked with. That does not include what Joanne talked about. So that didn't include the ag, the military, the conventions. This is primarily just sports, but it also includes the Car Show, Comic-Con, a few events like that. Sports, as far as the big market, KESHA events, events that happened at the Field House, specifically the youth market, basketball, volleyball, a little bit of soccer. So all of those are in those, that sixty-five number for events. And we were able to track visitors at those events at fifty-three thousand thirty-seven. And then we were able to estimate the economic impact of those events at sixteen point nine million dollars. So I feel that's a great year-end compilation. Some highlights that happened this year. We were able to do a site visit with Steve Pogue, who is the Director of the National Division Two Homeschool Basketball Event. And we were able to secure that event for three years. He came in and did a site visit. One of the reasons he was here is because we host the Smokey Valley Hoops Encounter, which is another homeschool event. They bring about thirty-five to forty teams into the Field House. He was at that event and said, I'd like to come see Salina. And we were able to pick up, we believe there'll be at least eighty-five teams here for that ND2 homeschool event. So you will see them when they come in March. And we're working through some things like telling people where to park and what to do with that kind of volume. They also partnered with us, with the Field House, and KW is going to be using some of Maybe Arena to host that event, and also maybe K-State Salina. So they really love the Field House and a great event that we have secured, and you'll notice. The other thing I wanted to mention, a couple of weeks ago, I went to Kansas City and was able to do sports tourism, just a, a conference. Not normally in Kansas City, but it was close. So in addition to meeting with rights holders like we normally do, we were able to work with Sports Kansas and host the conference attendees, which are rights holders and NGVs. We gave them a special attention, or invitation, to take a bus to Sporting Casey or Children's Mercy Park. And we did a progressive tour with them. We had representation from the Kansas Department of Commerce. Adam Rohrbach was there, as well as the Tourism Director for Kansas Department of Commerce, Bridget Jobe. So we really did make a positive impact on about thirty rights holders that actually came just to the Sports Kansas event at a national conference. So that was a great event. Next slide. All right, and then a few other highlights I wanted to note, just on the KESHA front. We host a lot of state championships, as you're aware, and a lot of events through KESHA. But some big things happened this year. One, wrestling. We were able to add the three-A, two-A, one-A State Boys Wrestling Tournament. Fort Hayes had a conflict for that event, so they looked at bringing it to Salina. And Salina was selected even over Wichita. So traditionally, again, that event has been in Fort Hayes. Well, we host four-A wrestling, as well as one-A, two-A, three-A, four-A girls wrestling. And so we will have basically three wrestling tournaments all happening at the same time. They'll extend the day for three days. Big shout-out to Tony's Pizza Event Center, because they will be able to accommodate eight mats on the arena floor for that event. So, and again, another one that you will notice when all of those people come to town. A lot more overnight than what we normally have for that wrestling event as well. And then, of course, state softball. After last year, doing kind of a quick, we're going to go to South High School to make that happen. We have confirmed with KESHA that they wanted it there again this year. And so that event, as well as state baseball, will happen at Dean Evans. South will have state softball. And at the same time, that opened up Bill Burke to host another baseball tournament, the six, four, three baseball tournament. So seeing some great effects from the turf for the KESHA, as well as just baseball and softball. A lot of that coming up as we move forward. Tennis, KESHA did tell us, too, that they have looked at the new tennis facility, and they are very interested in using that for some events in the future. So it's on their mind, they've seen it, and I think we'll be hearing more about that. Do I have a few minutes to go through some Datafy information, or how do you? Okay, all right, great. Well, one of the things I wanted to share with you. We did contract with a company called Datafy. And what they do is they work with destination management organizations to generate visitor analytics. Datafy tracks and compiles data from multiple sources, including digital devices, electronic purchasing, and other digital tracking mechanisms, which you can kind of see there on the screen. It is not exact, it is only an estimate, and it's based on several tracking inputs. It is a good way for us to track trends and compare data, and that's the bottom line, is are we investing in the right types of advertising? And are, is, it's also a great way for us to compare, like our transient guest tax numbers, or when we get the STAR reports. So I did want to share some of that with you today, keeping in mind that data out is only as good as the data in, and also opted in. So these statistics do change a lot. Every time you use an app on your phone, it'll ask you, will you allow me to track you? So if you say no, it tracks you. If you say yes, it, if you say no, it doesn't track you, but if you say yes, it does. And that, of course, keeps these numbers moving, so it's hard to do a comparison year, year over year, and sometimes day-to-day. But we do look at all of it, and it does give us some really good trends. So I wanted to share with you what we actually could see this year.
One minute.
Thank you.
Sorry, but.
Yep, I understand. So we looked at visitors beyond a sixty-mile radius, or basically, visitors throughout the United States. For one year, we looked at January first, 2022, through December thirty-first, 2022. We looked at all the clusters, all the points of interest, and in-state versus out-of-state. And what we found was that the total trips taken by visitors was over two point three million. Visitors spent about four point six million days in Salina. The average length of their stay was about two days. And we had more than nine hundred and sixty thousand unique visitors. As you might guess, when you look at the breakdown, the city breakdown, where do Salina visitors come from? Wichita, Hayes, Manhattan, Topeka, Kansas City. And then the state breakdown, again, not as unexpected, Kansas, Missouri, Colorado, Oklahoma, and Texas. So, next slide. You can also see the share of trips by state. And obviously, the trips by visitors in-state were slightly more than visitors by out-of-state. But our visitors out-of-state spend a lot more time here.
Okay, I'm going to give each Commissioner one question, and then anything else we have, we're going to put in writing, so. Who wants to go first?
No question, just keep working hard.
I do have one question. Don't run off, anybody. No, this is an easy one. When we look at the hotel occupancy and we look at transient guest tax, does that, that does not include the Homewood Suites because of the, the, is that correct? Those numbers are pulled out because that goes to the Star Bonds, correct? Okay. There you go. I kind of, I thought that was the answer, but.
Yeah, cut some more stuff, so if you have questions, please don't hesitate.
See, I can do this. If Sylvia was here, she's mean, I wouldn't have been, and we'd get by with all that, so. So anyway, thank you, ladies.
There's one clarification, and, and they touched on it, but there is a funding agreement in terms of percentage allocation that's already in place. So the chamber typically is more of an annual report of what they're doing, what they've done, and what they intend to do. And we continue forward with that, that funding allocation, rather than a dollar ask, per se, like some other agencies might make of us.
All right. Next up is Leslie Bishop with Salina Downtown.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Leslie Bishop, Executive Director of Salina Downtown. I would like to recognize Diane Gebhardt, Aesthetic Specialist with Salina Downtown, April Rickman, our Executive Assistant and Event Planner. I also would like to recognize John Reber, President of our Board, and Mike Wilson, a member of our board. I would like to just start with our new tagline, Salina Downtown, No Better Place to Be. I really believe that with my heart in our traffic shows. I'd like to point out our highlights of 2022. The, one of the top ones is that we became a designated Kansas Main Street, both with Main Street America and Kansas Main Street. The governor came and recognized us, we are thrilled about that. Also, I would like to point out that we held consistent and frequent First Friday Live Events, which was one of our goals, to bring back consistent entertainment free to our community. We added twenty-four hanging baskets that Diane designed, that we received a grant from the Greater Salina Community Foundation for a portion of that. They added, they added such great beauty to our downtown. Also, I would like to mention that we added a new event called The Great Escape with the Rolling Hills Zoo, with a hundred youth participants in July. We brought back our Salina Wine Walk, and we had great reports from that. We added a few things by adding live entertainment, some bigger giveaways, and we had a tremendous turnout. We also had a downtown trick-or-treat with the largest group of trick-or-treaters in our downtown. We had this year a holiday art market with the Salina Art Warehouse. Every vendor at that art market, there were fifteen of them, sold something. They paid back their booth fees, and it added extra shopping to our downtown within the district. We had the largest holiday festival to date last year with our Parade of Lights. We also added the beautiful lights that line, that, that all the trees that line Santa Fe are now lit with Christmas lights. And we cannot forget the mayor's Christmas tree located in Campbell Plaza. That is a joint effort between Salina Downtown Incorporated, the City of Salina, and First Bank Kansas. We also added pictures with Santa for two Saturdays leading up to Christmas with great response. And the best problem of all, no place to park. Our achievements with CID, and I want to remind you that our CID funding is very specific. It's spent on maintenance, security, and programming. We added twelve additional security cameras in the downtown district. We hosted five new events. We had, we brought our Diane, full-time, forty hours, aesthetic specialist, and we added a part-time aesthetics maintenance assistant. We brought, we had spring and summer planting of our flower pots. And as I mentioned before, we added the Christmas tree, an eighteen-foot Christmas tree with the help of the, of City of Salina and First Bank. As you notice in your packet, total CID funds spent roughly two hundred and fourteen thousand. And that, we used all of our funds that carried over from twenty-one. If you remember, twenty-one, our office was in a huge transition. And so all of that, we did have a lot going on in terms of programming, because we became an office of one for quite a period of time, but all of that money has since gone. Last year, the City of Salina, Salina was generous to provide us with sixty thousand in operational cost and sixty thousand in facade funding. The funding sources here does not include the sixty thousand dollars in facade funding, because that's a in-and-out. But I will let you know that as of today, we have a remaining balance in our facade funding of three thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars. As you can tell, that money is well-used by our business owners and property owners, and it makes a huge difference. Right here is a great example, Prickly Pear, and then the old coin shop. So we're thrilled to know that that facade money is being used, and it's really quite beneficial to our property owners. So, next slide. Obviously, the kids, that's the other thing I just want to point out. We are having so many families coming downtown, and so we added this picture. So we received a total of a hundred and twenty thousand from the city last year. But again, remember, the sixty thousand dollars is an in-and-out. It does not, we don't say, keep that. Our highlights for 2023, oh, and be real quick, on 2022, I am so proud of our office. We met every goal that we set for ourselves. With the exception of the digital billboard at Ashen. Ashen Santa Fe. But, we're going to get there. So, I can't do all these things without the support of our board, and of course, Diane and April. We also, in '23, we already have hosted our first-ever Hot Cider and Cocoa Crawl. That was a free event to our downtown, to our community. That was met with great response, great reviews. We will plan on doing it again. The idea was hot cocoa in the, bringing people down in February, where it tends to be a little bit slower. We also worked with Equifest and had a story walk and a horse hunt for the kids in the community. We, our new feature this year is called the Salina Downtown 411, where it's a merchant spotlight. Those are up and running. We attended a farmer's market conference in San Diego called Market Pro. And then, we also attended the Main Street Now, Main Street America Conference in Boston. That is a requirement to remain a designated Kansas Main Street to attend that conference yearly. We are this year hosting a back-to-school bash with the Kansas Westland, Salina Tech, and K-State Salina that will be held at Campbell, or at City Light Stage. We continue to have quarterly training through Kansas Main Street. So, quarterly, we are required to go to various communities to meet with other downtown directors. I'm proud to say in September, Salina Downtown will be the host of all the directors of the Main Streets in Kansas, approximately a hundred. They'll be staying at the Homewood Suites and enjoying our downtown. We are hosting our first-time-ever Dog Days of Summer Concert in July. That is with Savannah Chestnut, if you all remember The Voice. I know you all watch The Voice. And we also are working currently on a new and improved downtown website, which will able, enable us to track who's visiting downtown, where they're coming from, how long they're staying, that kind of thing. We also had our first-time-ever downtown dough promotion. That was a two-month promotion to help our merchants in that first quarter, where our visitors could spend $10. If they got to fifty, they got to enter in to a drawing. Salina Downtown provided those prizes. That brought in $184,000 to our downtown merchants. And we hosted our first-time-ever Salina Chamber After Hours. So, we were excited about that. The big thing, again, we were just reaccredited for the 2023 Main Street America, Kansas Main Street Program. I'd like to point out that I was an Independence Kansas not too long ago for a quarterly training. And Kansas Main Street, that's located in Topeka, made a point of coming up to me, Scott Sewell, and saying that they are watching us. They are watching what we're doing in downtown Salina. They also mentioned the same thing in Boston for the Main Street Now Conference. Scott assured me that they don't normally talk about other downtowns like that. We are on track to win, or on track to get the great American Main Street Award, GAMSA Award, and it's a really big deal for those who follow designated downtowns. We are more than proud of this Main Street reaccreditation. Our CID funds for 2023, our forty-seven hanging baskets, we added eight more to the twenty-four that we received. I'm happy to let you know that on May twenty-eighth, all of those baskets, well, maybe not all the baskets, all the pots will be planted, the baskets will be going up. We will have contract labor to power wash all of our tunnels. We are hoping to enhance the Spillman Plaza area by adding some flowers and some possible umbrellas for the seating outside, and another Christmas enhancement. We also, you were generous to support our Trash Corral mural project, and that is on the books. We also have new application and permit fees to the city when we have our events. So, second year to install our lights that line Santa Fe, plus the second installment of the Christmas tree that will go up. And, we are proud to say that we are going to have, I'm pretty confident to say, by June one, downtown-specific gift certificates that it will act like a check, very similar to Smoky Hill Silver, but it will be strictly for downtown businesses, and we're really excited about that. And I, we've got, we get a phone call a week about downtown-specific gift cards. So, we're going to be able to offer that to our community. Our 2024 funding request, as you can see, our contribution raised to $80,000 from sixty last year. Primarily, it's the cost of doing business. As you all know, the prices have gone up, but that assures reliable trash-up, trash pickup. It ensures that we have, we can pay all of our bills. Also, it helps pay for the three of us that work so hard for all of you for downtown Salina. Again, we're asking for $60,000 in facade funding. That was the same that we asked for last year. Our CID funding, I will mention, is maybe not 100% accurate. We're still learning, and it's kind of hard to guess how many, how much sales tax. But, I will tell you that we are on track. I mean, we've already, for 2023, in January, we received two-hundred, in the, in the tax, achieved twenty-one, 221,000. And then, in February, 286,585, March, 216. Talking to Don Booz with Salina 2020, we are on track to continue, that is continuously growing. I will add, Mayor Hoppick, you had mentioned the transient guest tax for the hotel. In 2022, the hotel received $357,035 in that transient guest, guest tax. And, Don Booz, as of today, in just our local sales tax received, in March, we have received 71,857. Last year at this time, it was 64,000, just about 65. So, we are meeting all of our benchmarks, but we want to be able to continue to do that. And that is why the increase in our operational budget that we're requesting. We are confident that we can continue on track to meet all of our goals in '23. As I mentioned, we've already achieved some of those, but we need help in doing that. And so, our total request for the year is $140,000. But, again, I want to remind you that our CID funding is very specific, and the $60,000 in facade funding, which is only $3,000 left for '23, is an in-and-out recycled account. I want to also point, for 2024, we have some new plans. As I mentioned, we are required to ascend, to attend the Main Street Now, Main Street America Conference. Next year, it will be in Alabama, so we plan to do that. All of our First Friday Events, April through October, I would like you to know, are booked with signed contracts. We are very thrilled with that. We will continue to have our quarterly training in designated downtown Main Streets throughout Kansas throughout the year. We are looking to bring back the holiday art market. We are going to hope to work with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and have bed races in downtown Salina. We'd like to try to implement a downtown trivia night for adults, and also talk about having a craft beer festival in the downtown area. I will also say to you that through our social media, our numbers continue to track upwards. We get phone calls every day about what's happening here, what's happening there, and there, and we get compliments. I will toot our horn. We get more compliments now than complaints, and I am thrilled about that. Our new offices are located on Santa Fe. That has huge, has meant, I mean, it's been a huge asset for us. We're able to get outside and meet with our merchants. We meet with them at least twice a month. Our merchants have been telling me that their holiday season last year was better than it was the year before, and their year for '23 was better than the year before. And I attribute that to all of the good work that our office does to promote downtown Salina. I am proud of what I do. I am proud of promoting our downtown. And we have some large projects that will be coming up through the balance of this year, dealing with the homeless population and the farmer's market. We met with the city last week, and we have our first, we have to get, develop a site plan, but that will, again, bring traffic downtown. I think we are in a perfect storm to have a tremendous farmer's market in downtown Salina. That is one request that we get a lot of. I also will say that we get visitors from Abilene, McPherson, Wichita, Hayes, Ellsworth, Bennington, and a lot of people from out-of-state that are coming with, to visit their family. Salina Downtown is vibrant. We are excited. We have, I, we're, we are being noticed. And I attribute that to all the hard work that we do and the support that we get from the City of Salina, and of course, Visit Salina and the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
You always talk fast, but you might have set a record.
Well, I have one minute.
You might even get to answer a few questions. One of the things you didn't hit on is the gift cards.
Yeah.
That you do. Could you talk a little bit about that? Because that's been...
The gift card, the Small Business Appreciation Week?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is great. We brought in just about $11,000 that went directly back into the downtown merchants. So, the week of, that's proclaimed by the mayor, Small Business Appreciation Week, downtown visitors and guests can purchase a downtown gift card for twenty, it's worth 25, but they get it for 20. Last, in '23, we sold 184. This year, or, excuse me, 22, 184. This year, we sold 434. So, we are really proud of that. And I think with the gifts...
I can't believe you left that off, and I had to bring that up for you.
I know. Well, thank you, Mike.
Really?
See, it was, it was to see if you were listening when I told you.
Yeah.
But, we are really proud of that. Our foot traffic is, I, I, I know we joke, but there is no parking in downtown Salina, and there is music, that is music to my ears because there's plenty of parking. We had our largest event ever for our Saturday event after the sculpture tour unwrapped. We had over 250 people at our Sunset Center concert that was graciously also helped host by Weedle Financial. So, and there was no parking in downtown Salina on Friday and Saturday by 4:30.
Questions to my right?
More of a comment, just about the downtown in general. It just keeps getting better.
I agree with you.
My, my wife and I were eating outdoors in Campbell's Plaza over the weekend, and we had a chance to check out the new bookstore, which is just, the fit and finish in that place is phenomenal.
It's a beautiful store.
It just goes perfectly with the rest of the downtown. And, like I said, it just keeps getting better.
I agree.
Genuinely exciting.
Thank you. We've worked hard.
You got forty security cameras.
Yes.
Spending a lot of money on them.
Yes.
How effective are the cameras?
The, the cameras have been effective, they're about, I would say, eighty, eighty-thirty, Bill, Mr. Longbine, excuse me. We have caught an arsonist. We also caught the person that was shooting little pellets. It was a TikTok challenge. We caught that person. We've caught other unpleasantries. We had, we, the police has been very gracious, great, I mean, they've been great coming over. They get our camera footage. They're effective. We need more, and that will be something that...
That's what I wondered, if it's deterring problems.
I think it deters some. I don't think it's enough. I think one thing we need, as I was listening, looking into maybe having some private foot security, especially on the weekends. But, that's costly, too. Again, our operational costs, I mean, the CID funding can help that. But, it is a deterrent. I will say that, yes. We're working closely with Salina Rescue Mission. They're giving us lots of good guidance on how to take care of some things, so...
Yeah, thank you.
I have, and I, one last comment. Adrian Allen, the Director of the Salina Symphony, we saw her right before Christmas. She came up and said, Leslie, thank you so much for the Christmas tree. And of course, I have to thank you as well. But, Adrian's comment was, we took selfies in front of that. My family, who does not live in Kansas, said, where are you? And Adrian Allen said, in downtown Salina. It gives me goosebumps as I stand here. That is the good work that our office is doing. I'm proud of everything that we have accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you and your staff. And just show a little enthusiasm next time when you come up here, would you?
Thank you for your time.
Great job. Thank you, guys. Okay.
Next up, we'll have Mitch Robinson with the Salina Community Economic Development.
I'm going to have to really pump it up here.
I'm waiting to see what you're bringing, buddy.
Tough act. I'm going to have to talk to Debbie next year about going before.
You want to go a different order next year?
I think so. I think we need to rotate. This is, I'm Mitch Robinson, Executive Director, Salina Community Economic Development Organization. And I'm, I'm proud to be here, too. I'm excited. And those of you all who were at Swan's Friday morning, got to see a little bit about the exciting things that's going on here. And that's just one of many. We just go across the interstate and look at more construction going on at Great Plains as a new facility, their construction equipment facility on the south end of town. And we look at activities going on related to One Vision Aviation. So, I'm excited about a lot of things going on here. The teamwork, we talked about the teamwork. We've completed a lot of the people. They're, they're here today. You know, we had a great legislative session. We got funding for projects out at the airport. We got other activities. People in Topeka know about Salina. There's a lot of discussion about all the activity. The city managers had heard those comments and had people talk to him about it. So, I was fortunate to speak to a leadership group out in Hayes a couple of weeks ago, made up of city commissioners, county commissioners. And a lot of them came up afterwards and started asking me questions, well, how did you all do this? So, it was kind of exciting to talk about the successes we've had. But, it's, it's really a lot of teamwork. But, you're all's funding for our organization is critical, and we'll, we'll get into that. So, I'm going to start off the first, the first slide. If you'd asked me three years ago if the wave of IRBs that we've seen would be coming, I would have had to say, hmm, maybe, maybe not. But, we've had a tremendous amount of activity here with our industrial revenue bonds. The city is able to offer those. And our first three projects we mentioned here is Bex Hybrid. Bex is now, in June 26, I think is still the right date. We'll be back on the agenda for their presentation. The CEO and owner of the company will be here, and they're working through their annexation process with the additional ground. Their property, their project is now up to 22.27 million. This is a dated number here. GeoProbe is moving along with their construction out at their facility, out at the airport property. They continue to grow their business, and this is going to help them provide additional capacity to produce and paint their, their equipment. Superior is continuing to work on their warehouse project. They've not been able to get their contract signed yet, but they are in, hopefully, final negotiations with their number-one client that they feel will be taking the bulk of that facility, that they'll start construction planning later this summer. Then over, next, next slide, please. Housing has been, in conjunction with city staff, has been very important. We've had the Overland Lee Lost Building. That was a Phase Two project, as you all well know. That was finished earlier this year. And then, later, next month, I believe, the Bacta Construction with the new hotel. It'll be built on the south side of Interstate 70. This is the project that didn't get built a couple of years ago for a couple of reasons. So, these two are related to housing, which we're really excited about what's going on with, with housing, and I'll touch on that a little bit more. But, we're continuing to follow up with Swan's, Great Plains, Cabota. What you all saw on Friday, those who all were out there, this is, you know, there's still more to come. They've got plans for the second phase of their production line. The building that's built is only being half-used at this point. So, we know, we don't know when, but we know that'll be coming along here in the future. As Demetrius said, people are eating lots of pizza. So, it's good for Swan's and, and good for our community. Next is the chart you all have seen. We're continuing to work through, trying to fine-tune this. There's some other things we're working with on the bond attorney, on, on what's going on with our Bs trying to improve this process, make it simpler, more efficient. So, we're excited about this. I think that was a good improvement. Next is, is our budget request. As you all know, if you don't know, this is, we've operated off of three-year project budget commitments from our funding groups, city, county, airport authority, and then the chamber provides us housing, no charge, as part of their donation to our efforts. So, we are on the third year of the third cycle. So, we're asking for the same amount of money as we have the last two previous years, the 275,000. And that'll, that'll keep us at our standard, not standard, but our, what we've asked for, for the last several years. And we feel like this is a comfortable number. As you all know, this is coming off the sales tax fund that the city has. So, next is some of our other activities in addition to our normal industrial activity. You know, as I mentioned, our housing, we have followed what's been very closely with what the city is doing. We're excited about the opportunity, and, and this really is going to be a game-changer once the contract... And this really is going to be a game changer once the contracts are signed and we're ready to start seeing dirt moved. I think, well, I know this is going to be a critical point for us in moving the community ahead in this area because the company people are, they keep asking every time they see me, and I'm sure Mike and the mayor, all of you all, you get asked about it, where are we? And this is something that's very important. Childcare, been some progress made there. We're just one of multiple groups, along with the chamber. They continue to work on that. United Way has now taken the lead in that. They've hired a lady to run that program. So, we're excited about that. There's going to be an article coming out, I think in the newspaper here, probably this week, on childcare activities going on. I'm going to get interviewed for that tomorrow. I know Renee's already been interviewed. Our other activities, of course, a small business development. It's a joint effort with the chamber. Part of our really fun, fun things that we're doing has been the Second Annual Charlie Walker Pitch Challenge, which was held at Kansas Westland this year. We had 11 applicants. And you see the picture of the winner there, that he received $7,500 to help with expansion of his relatively new business. I mentioned the legislative year. The chamber's done an excellent job putting together the legislative panel. And as you all well know, this year we had the, our lobbyists working for us. And I think that really paid, paid off in a lot of ways for the community. And lastly, I wanted to save time for, it's amazing when you look at the clock, how much time it does take. But I wanted to save time for questions from you all. Commissioner Longbine, I appreciate you attending our meetings. It's, I think it's good to have that relationship for all the commissioners over the years that have been able to attend. You know, I always thank Mike and the city guys and ladies. The staff relationship that we have, we know when we call and ask questions, you know, they always respond very quickly to get us the questions we need, whether it's for companies or prospective companies. And I think that, again, goes back to that teamwork. And that's driving a lot of the success we've seen here in the community over the last five to six years. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, start to my left.
Got five minutes.
You know, really don't have any questions. I'm just surprised you weren't asking for more money.
Did you ever find out about what your wife was interested, you said, the other day when we ran into each other?
No, but, oh, yes. I do remember. She did tell me. There are no men's shop, clothing shops in town. She wanted a Nordstrom's. And then she said, well, okay, well, but at least a men's shop so I can go shop. But she wants to know if anyone out there is interested in.
Boy, that's a tough one. That's a tough one.
Well, if we're taking requests.
Right.
Yeah, I'd second that one.
I just came, was up in Wyoming this weekend and came down through Nebraska. And on the way up and the way back, we have to stop at Runza. Hope anyone's familiar with that. But my wife would really like to see one here.
You're going to have to tell me what it is because I don't even know what it is.
It's like a beer rock. It's kind of like a.
It's like a beer rocks. It's a practically held company.
Gotcha.
Founded up in Lincoln.
Closest, closest one's in Lawrence, in case you.
Where?
There's one in Lawrence.
Yeah, there's one in Lawrence. And I think she said there's one in Marion. So, no, there is a lot of really great things, big things going on. And I was sure amazed out there at Swan's last Friday that they're not stopping.
What did they, what'd they say? They'd had 80 additions to the facility?
Yeah, four over the years.
I said, who knew? It just looked like one continuous. It was hard, you know?
Since Dick Barlow.
If you look, if you look at the aerial map on the building, you can see there's all these little squares, you know, they're not all normal. One big one, it's all little bitty ones, except for the new one. And that's.
And I really appreciated that they have not forgotten where that started.
Yeah.
And really.
They did talk about the history and the people involved in that.
Commissioner.
Adding to that list of ones, how about a Buc-Ee's? Anybody from Texas?
That's one I was just going to say as well, because we've all heard about the famous Buc-Ee's. A friend of mine is in southern Florida and they're building one close to him. And he says it's pretty amazing what they're going to do. But it's very expensive to get, so.
If I could, I would jump in a little bit. There was, you know, years ago, there was a lot more conversation, a lot more focus on retail and restaurant-type activity and trying to recruit that and market that. I don't know that there was noticeable success in that regard, but economic development 101 would tell you, focus your incentives, focus your efforts on primary jobs that create employers, that create construction. And then when the money gets in the economy, the rest of the market will kind of respond accordingly. I can't tell you what, you know, Salina's economy and the national economy's doing with respect to retail clothing stores versus Amazon, those type of things. But I think, you know, our successes have been in the primary job creation. And we certainly see the spin-off in terms of construction labor in the community and hotel rooms and money circulating through the economy that way.
From being on the commission and being formerly a chamber board president and all that, you know, we used to kind of get beat up for all the restaurants that would come in here. I said, well, you know, we're really not out soliciting them. They come here because they want to be here because of the success Salina's having and the, and the regional draw we have and stuff. So, you're going to have contact Buc-Ee's yourself probably. I'm going to take a different angle. I'm not going to.
Actually, I didn't have a question. All kidding aside, I was going to, go ahead, actually.
No, go ahead.
No, no, no. You know what? Time's a factor. Let's.
I wasn't, I wasn't going to ask for anything like the other three did. I was just going to say how thankful I am for where we're at. You know, it wasn't that long ago that we were kind of disjointed. But I think the EDO, the chamber, the city, the county, the airport authority, everybody's come together. And it's just a, it's, it's a tremendous statement of where we've come as a community. When we went to Topeka and asked for the 25 million for housing, the one thing they were impressed with is how we were one united body. And so, to everybody that's involved in that, all the organizations, I say thank you. And so, it's thank you. Not quite as exciting as Leslie's, but.
I couldn't, I don't talk near that fast either.
Anything percolating that we should be looking for on the horizon or?
Yes.
Yeah.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yep.
Talk to your neighbor there. He can, he attends the meetings. He hears what's going on, so.
Okay, we'll move on to the next one. We have about 10 minutes left before we need to break. So, see what we can get through here.
Last up will be Chad Young with Salina Grace.
And I did promise Chad some rollover time if we need to do another meeting.
Yeah, because we're probably going to have to, we'll give you about till five till, then we need a break. So, I apologize for that, Chad, but.
Sure. Well, I intend to be short as possible and be right to the point. Salina Grace is working hard with all of our downtown partners and the city of Salina to address a problem that we have here in our community. And this problem isn't any different than any other community across the nation is experiencing, and that's with homelessness. Homelessness is a problem. It creates concerns for our local business owners. We've just heard from so many different people up here about how much time and money is being invested into our community. And certainly, it brings a lot of concerns for our downtown business owners with seeing the homeless here in our community. Not only is it just an eyesore for some, but there's safety concerns. Whether it's people who are acting inappropriately or using the bathroom where they shouldn't, it does create other problems within our community. It takes up additional resources within our communities with the need for law enforcement officers, interventions, EMS. There's issues related to drug use and crimes. There's health concerns. And all of this has a financial impact on every community that's involved with homelessness. That financial impact can cost a community anywhere from 30 to 50,000 dollars for one homeless person upon that community. And that's broken down through the time spent from law enforcement, unpaid medical bills, other public programs going to help those causes. And so, doing nothing is not a good option. We have to be doing something. So, Salina Grace has been getting involved. There were homeless downtown before we opened the Community Resource Center downtown. As a matter of fact, us opening the Community Resource Center downtown was a response to what we heard from other people in the downtown area. Why is there so many homeless here? Someone needs to do something. And so, we stepped up to the plate and we talked with our other partners here in town. And we started talking about what the needs are and steps that we can take to start getting involved to help address the homeless issues. So, as you're aware, we've been providing a winter shelter at Grand Avenue United Methodist Church since 2017. And our next step was to provide the Community Resource Center kind of a clearinghouse of all of the resources our community has to offer in one location. And we have community navigators that work with those who are coming into the resource center and making sure that they're finding the help they need. We're walking alongside them to get that help. And not only that, but we're continuing to walk alongside them because it's not a quick one-and-done situation. It's an ongoing situation. They didn't get, become homeless overnight, and they're not going to get out of homelessness overnight either. So, with your support, we've been able to start addressing some things. And the first was provide a low-barrier shelter. This winter season, we were able to provide shelter for 72 men, 33 different women, and four kids in our winter shelter. Those are people we were able to get off the streets and immediately into shelter. We operate the Community Resource Center where we're working diligently to help people to get to the next steps and next level of care, where we're addressing root cause issues such as mental health, addiction, and other poverty-related issues, including lack of healthy, affordable housing, medical care, and so forth. As we walk through this, when we opened our doors a year ago, we had no idea what the numbers were going to look like. And so, part of this was a learning expedition, right? We were going to learn more about our homeless population. And we thought maybe we'd get 20 to 30 people a day coming through our doors. But we've been having 50 to 60 people a day coming through our doors. We partnered with Christ Cathedral, who was serving lunches in the downtown area. And we invited them to partner with us. So, instead of scattering out resources, we're drawing the resources in. And those people that were going to their parking lot for food are now coming into the resource center for food so that we can then engage them with our care managers. This year, we served over 15,000 meals through this partnership. We provide space for counselors from other agencies to come meet with our clients here in our offices. And those partnerships are growing. We're looking to have some full-time partnerships with Central Kansas Mental Health and CKF Addiction Treatment Centers. And there's another organization we're talking to right now about providing a full-time person from their organization within the Community Resource Center as well. Overall, this past year, we served 571 different people. 395 were men, 176 were women. And one of the questions that I hear all the time is, where are they coming from? Are they from our area? Are they from another area? 70% were from the Salina area. And 30% came from other areas surrounding, whether that be Abilene, McPherson, Ellsworth, Hayes, and so forth. Of those that we worked with, we made 3,907 referrals for help. And in addition to that, that means that one person coming in for help needs essentially about seven different resources agencies helping them to address their needs. I know we're running out of time here.
I apologize, but we have.
Yeah.
One more minute because we have to break so we can come back.
So, this past year, the city's helped us with $60,000. We're getting ready to move to a new location over on Broadway. It's going to cost us some additional funding moving into this new location. In addition, we have hired another part-time staff person. We're asking if the city commission would increase their support in 2024 from 60,000 to 75,000. That's what I would like to share. I've got a lot more details. I've got a lot more numbers. And I've got a lot of enthusiasm. But I'm also out of time. I appreciate your time. If you got a quick question or if you'd like me to come back, I'd be happy to come back and share more details.
Let you talk to the city manager, Mike Scragg, about that.
If I could, I had one comment. Chad, in particular, and Salina Grace have been a terrific community partner. As we've had issues, they've been very receptive. They're helpful in terms of us trying to identify a productive solution. And they obviously are building a team and an approach beyond what the police department, the city prosecutor, anybody on city staff can do independently, so.
And tomorrow, I'm meeting with Chief Weiss to talk about some of the issues downtown. I've been meeting with Leslie with Salina Downtown Inc., trying to help her address some of these issues as well.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we're going to break and we'll be back here at 4 o'clock. Thank you. Okay, it is. I'm going to, it's four o'clock. I will call the Salina City Commission meeting to order. I will look to city staff for confirmation of the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. May we have a roll call?
Mayor Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Okay, well, those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we will start out with words and proclamations.
Item three point one, recognition of the week of May twenty-one through May twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three as National Public Works Week in the City of Salina. Laura Halgen, Administrative Assistant for General Services, will read the proclamation.
Proclamation of the City of Salina, Kansas, whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as streets, highways, stormwater and levee systems, solid waste collection and disposal operations, municipal fleet maintenance services, water treatment and distribution, wastewater collection and treatment, engineering and inspection in public facilities, and whereas the health and safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these services and facilities each and every day, as well as times of emergency and community disaster, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services and facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent on the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the quality and dedication, dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, I, Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim the week of May twenty-first through May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three as National Public Works Weeks. The City of Salina and I call upon all citizens and civil organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life.
Thank you. Do you have any special events or anything scheduled to celebrate the...
We plan on having a luncheon later on in the summer, but throughout the week, it's a, an ongoing process where we recognize our public works.
Yeah. Well, public works is one of those that nobody thinks about or is thankful for until something stops working. And then, then we realize how much we, we fall upon the hard work of our employees to keep everything moving forward. So with that, I will have you come forward, and I have a proclamation to present to you.
Item three point two, recognition of the day of June second, two thousand and twenty-three as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Salina. Corey Sherman North, co-leader of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America, will read
Thank you. This proclamation declares the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Salina, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we as a country must do more to end this public health crisis. Whereas every day, more than one hundred and twenty Americans are killed by gun violence and more than two hundred shot and wounded, with an average of more than seventeen thousand gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are twenty-six times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries, and whereas Kansas has four hundred and fifty-six gun deaths average every year, with a rate of fifteen point seven deaths per one hundred thousand people, a crisis that costs the state five point seven billion each year, of which ninety-five point one is paid by taxpayers. Kansas has the twenty-first highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in the hundred and twenty-seven cities, and whereas cities across the nation, including in Salina, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions, and whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizen goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories, and whereas mayors and law enforcement officers in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as we see an increase in firearm homicides and non-fatal shootings across the country, increased calls to domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. Whereas in January, two thousand and thirteen, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age fifteen. And on June second, two oh two three, twenty-three, to recognize the twenty-sixth birthday of Hadia Pendleton, born in nineteen ninety-seven, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadia Pendleton and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadia's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, they chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June second and the first Friday, the first Friday in June in two thousand and twenty-three to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June second, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the hands of people who should not have access and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Mike Hoppick of the City of Salina declares the first Friday in June, June second, two thousand and twenty-three, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to port their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives.
Okay, thank you. Besides wearing orange on June second, do you have any activities planned or any, like educational seminars or anything for the public?
We do have an event. We have partnering with the Red Cross to present a blood drive on Saturday, June third, held at the Salina Mall. We are also partnering with the League of Women Voters and the Kansas Interfaith Action Groups to get as many blood donors as we can out to that day or any other day. Right now, the U.S. is in desperate need of blood supplies for hospitals, and gun violence victims often need as much as ten times as much blood donated during an emergency room visit. So we encourage everyone to come out on June third, Saturday at the mall. Sign up ahead of time if you can, and if you can't make it that day, please go online and sign up for the local Red Cross donation spot, the House on Prescott. So, thank you very much.
Since there's three of you, I'll come down there and present this. It might be easier than... Okay, that will lead us to consent agenda.
Item five point one, approve the minutes of the meeting of May fifteen, two thousand and twenty-three.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. That will bring us to administration.
Item six point one, approve ordinance number two-three dash one-one-one-five-two on second reading, approving a home rule ordinance reassessing certain special assessments in the River Trail Second Edition.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-three dash one-one-one-five-two was passed on first reading on May fifteenth. Since that time, no comments have been received. Are there any comments or questions from the commission? Any comments or questions from the public? If not, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number twenty-three, one-one-one-five-two on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash one-one-one-five-two on second reading. I would ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick.
Aye. That passes five zero. That will bring us to item six point two.
Item six point two, approve ordinance number two-three dash one-one-one-five-three on second reading, abandoning and repealing the approved preliminary and final development plan for the Pepper Tree Estates PDD and to eliminate all common area and the homeowners' association to create four independently-owned residential building lots.
Okay, ordinance number twenty-three dash one-one-one-five-three was also passed on first reading on May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Since that time, no comments have been received. Do we have any questions or comments for staff from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public? With that, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
We approve ordinance number two-three dash one-one-one-five-three on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash one-one-one-five-three on second reading. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick.
Aye. That ordinance passes five zero. Thank you very much. That will lead us to item six point three.
Item six point three, authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Blue Valley Public Safety for costs associated with upgrading twelve existing tornado sirens in the amount of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Captain Forrester.
Good afternoon. As she said, we're requesting you to authorize city manager to execute this agreement. In February, on February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, you all approved the two thousand and twenty-three SubCIP, which funded the upgrading of the twelve existing tornado sirens located here within the City of Salina. In two thousand and twenty, we signed the agreement with Motorola to upgrade our radio system to the current eight-hundred megahertz system. During those negotiations, that was part of the contract that we knew we were going to upgrade the tornado sirens within Salina and Sling County. And as part of that agreement and the contract, we purchased the nineteen radios and the equipment to upgrade the tornado sirens within the county and city. However, Motorola does not do the upgrading of those sirens. So Blue Valley Public Safety is the only vendor in the Midwest that sells federal signal, safety and security systems, which is what the actual equipment on the tornado sirens is consists of. And so we reached out to them, and they gave us a quote for the thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents, which is, would upgrade the twelve sirens within the city limits. We've given you four options or recommendation, options that you guys have the ability to look at, and we obviously are recommending option number one.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments for Captain Forrester? I'll look to my left.
Is the county upgrading their remaining seven?
They are. In fact, I believe there's three of the communities have already approved to do the upgrade.
And what is the, what is the big advantage of upgrading?
So currently, our system is very antiquated. It's still on the UHF system, so it's a completely separate radio system from going to the new system. The advantage is the current system is on what they call a daisy chain system. So when we go to set off the tornado sirens, it notifies one siren, which then in turn notifies the next siren, which in turn notifies the next siren. And so there's the opportunity to have errors. We also lose some of the reporting statistics or information that the emergency management needs when they do their testing and that kind of thing. So this system allows us, when we actually turn on the tornado sirens, it notifies all of them at once as opposed to individually.
So does dispatch make the notification or emergency management?
Dispatch has, can you do it too? Both, yeah.
Thank you. No questions.
Okay, I think that answered mine on the upgrade. So any questions or comments from the public? Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Blue Valley Pacific Safety for costs associated with upgrading twelve existing tornado sirens in the amount of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second. We have a motion and a second authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Blue Valley Public Safety, costs associated with upgrading twelve existing tornado sirens in the amount of thirty-four thousand, three... in the amount of $34,321.68. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you very much. That will lead us to item 6.4.
Item 6.4, award the bid for project number 23020 for Phase 2 of concrete improvements at various city parks to Seton Construction Group LLC in the amount of $168,123.50, with a 5% contingency and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Seton Construction Group LLC upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Mr. Hammond.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hoppick and commissioners. Jeff Hammond, Parks and Recreation Director, here before you today to, for you to consider awarding a bid and authorizing a contract for Phase 2 of concrete improvements for city parks. As you may recall, last year in July of 2022, we executed a contract with Call Valley Engineering for engineering services to design and engineer concrete improvements in three phases. February 27th of this year, I came before you to get approval for the bids and the agreement for the first phase. Seton Construction was contracted for work on that Phase 1 of concrete improvements, Phase 1 improvements. Just as a summary, the meeting in curb replacement at Bill Burke Park, parking lots at neighborhood parks at Steve Hawley Park and Phillips Park, a replacement entrance at Gypsum Hill Cemetery off of Marymount Road, new sidewalks, sidewalk connections and ADA parking at Lakewood Park, ADA parking, pavement replacement and connecting sidewalks at Sunset Park. One item I left off the summary in the blue sheet was Oakdale Park. There was two gravel parking lots that we converted to concrete and one small sidewalk to a shelter house. Seton Construction is approaching substantial completion for those Phase 1 improvements. The proposed Phase 2 improvements drawn and engineered by Call Valley include a sidewalk connecting Oakdale to Kenwood Cove, which would match the crosswalk that was recently installed by Public Works. Pacific Park, Riverside Park, and Schilling Park have, it will have ADA parking and connecting sidewalks from that parking lot to those playgrounds. And the bulk of the work will be at Jerry Ivy Memorial Park. We have replacing a shelter slab, new concrete sidewalks to the south shelter, from the south shelter to the bathroom, new concrete sidewalk at the northeast shelters, new concrete sidewalk to the southeast shelters, and regrading the center of the park and provide a replacement sidewalk in the north central area of the park. So, quite a bit of work in Jerry Ivy Memorial Park. I'm sorry, additionally, there's actually also four playground entrances that will be part of that work as well. While they're in those parks at Pacific and Riverside and Jerry Ivy, they'll be installing playground ramps as well. The bid documents for the proposed Phase 2 projects were published by Call Valley Engineering on March 23rd and advertised in the Salina Journal three times. The submission deadline for bids was April 13th. The bid tabulation, which is included in the commission action report, indicates that there was one bid for this project, which was Seton Construction. Per Call Valley Engineering, there were two additional plan holders that did not choose to bid. Phase 1 bids were open on January 12th for the first, for the Phase 1. Three bids were received at that time, and Seton Construction was the low bidder as part of that bid opening. A comparison of the units, unit pricing for the Phase 1 and Phase 2 is provided to you in your packet. Speaking with city engineering staff, in general, there is typically a small price increase from demand for summer construction and concrete projects. Staff has the following options for your consideration. Award the bid for Phase 2 park concrete improvements to Seton Construction in the amount of $168,123.50, which includes a 5% contingency, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Seton Construction Group. Option number two, award the bid for Phase 2 park concrete improvements to Seton Construction in the amount of $168,123.50, which includes a 5% contingency, and authorize the city manager to execute the contract with Seton Construction, with amendments as the city commission deems appropriate. Option number two. Option number three, postpone awarding the bid for Phase 2 park concrete improvements at various city parks to Seton Construction. I'm sorry, did I say, let me repeat that. Postpone awarding the bid for Phase 2 park concrete improvements at various city parks to Seton Construction to a specified date and time, and provide staff direction regarding further information or amendments for their, for consideration. And four, vote to deny awarding the bid for the project for park concrete improvements and provide staff further direction. I'll have any, I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Okay, questions?
None here.
Yeah, my first, the timeline on this, I've kind of been waiting on the, to put out for bid to fill in the Jerry Ivy Pond, and wondering if this is all going to work together or...
I'm working on a blue sheet for the city manager to review, or a staff report for the city manager to review regarding the Jerry Ivy Pond demolition. Those bids did come in.
Okay. And, and does Seton have a timeline on when to begin this?
Seton expressed to me that they would desire to start this project mid-June.
Okay.
If they were awarded the bid, of course.
Okay. And I guess I had a question for staff. Didn't we award a big sidewalk project to the same company recently?
Phase 1 for the parks improvements was to the same company.
I'm thinking of the sidewalks on Roach and, oh, the sidewalk off by Cornell School.
You could very well be right. I don't know off the top of my head. Staff is shaking their head no, so must've been a different contractor.
Okay.
But we had, we have awarded the Phase 1 parks.
Yeah, I guess my comment is that I haven't seen any sidewalks going in.
Oh.
So, that's why I wonder when they would be starting on this.
Yeah, the Phase 1 is there almost completed with...
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen a lot of the Phase 1 there at Sunset and Bill Burke. Yep, looks like they do good work.
Mr. Lenkowitz?
No questions.
Okay, any comments or questions from the public? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, move to award the bid for project number 23020 for Phase 2 of concrete improvements at various city parks to Seton Construction Group LLC in the amount of $168,123.50, with a 5% contingency, $8,006, and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Seton Construction Group LLC upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Second. Okay, I'll shorten this up a little bit. We have a motion and a second to approve the bid for project number 23020, improvements to various city parks to Seton Construction Group LLC in the amount of $168,123.50, including the 5% contingency, and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That item passes 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Hammond. That will lead us to item 6.5.
Item 6.5, authorize the mayor to execute an encroachment agreement and grant of easements among Storage Mart LLC, the Salina Airport Authority, and the City of Salina, Kansas.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Before I start, that sidewalk construction project is set to begin pretty soon. They haven't started yet. They're behind schedule, but have till July to finish it, so that's...
And who was that awarded to, do you remember?
It wasn't, it was another Wichita company, so you were close, but it's Multi-Con. They're actually working for the school right now, Multi-Con, working for the school district here in Salina.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, little aside, I didn't know if I'd get it, get it up last time or just do it now, so I just thought I'd do it now. So, there you go. Thank you. All right, this project is kind of part of our previous awarded drainage improvements along Centennial Road. Storage Mart is a property right here, just north of Schilling. Foxborough is over in this area, signed company here, Schilling, kind of Schilling subdivision over here to the, to the, to this area. Just put your orientation there. This property is old, kind of railroad right-of-way property, actually next to the levee that's out there. And Storage Mart was able to secure that property back in the early 2012, 13 timeframe and started working on building this property there. And to do that, they had to get a, no, no build, is it called? A no-build easement, no, no-build encroachment, 25 feet. This is SAA, Slane Airport Authority property. So, they had to get, kind of to squeeze it in there, they had to get some permission from the Slane Airport Authority to actually put that in there. So, in between there is, kind of between the, on the Slane Airport Authority property and in between the Storage Mart property is a 75-foot drainage channel easement. So, that's why the city's involved. It's really two private property owners that Storage Mart had trouble with their alignment and ended up building the, kind of the, it's interesting, it starts on the property line here, but as it moves to the north, it veers six feet over the line. So, regardless of the no-build easement, they ended up building it on the Slane Airport Authority property. So, that was a problem that they worked out with the Slane Airport Authority. But then along that, we discovered, they kind of discovered that really the drainage easement, we have some interest in that because we're doing a project there and we have a 75-foot drainage easement. So, we needed the product, the kind of the agreement between the airport authority. Storage Mart needed some blessing by the city because they've built a structure in the drainage easement, which is against our codes, code 42-63, that they cannot do that, or can't build something in a drainage easement without permission from the county commissioner or city commissioners. So, it's kind of why we're here today to kind of talk through that. We're, at this point, the drainage project is progressing. If you've been out there, you've seen a lot of trees taken out, a lot of grading work has happened to the south of this area, where we've taken quite a few trees out in here as well. We haven't done any grading in there yet, but if you move on to the next, the next slide there, Jacob, okay, there's, I don't know if you can rotate that, but it's a side picture of, that's, huh, you can't rotate that. There we go, that's good. Okay. So, the problem we've got is, you know, the drainage channel is kind of snugged over to this east side, so this would, I'm sorry, this is the west side. Over here is the Slane Airport Authority property. So, you can actually see that their property, the drainage channel actually starts kind of on their property, and then the easement's here, and then it actually has a lot more room on this, on this east side. So, the west side, it's hard to, hard to imagine, but we're looking, we're looking south, let's just say that. We're looking southeast, this is the Slane Airport Authority side, this is the Storage Mart side. So, we planned on having a decent amount of area on that, on that east side to be able to mow, to maintain this thing. So, by them, this is about a 10-foot buffer here. So, by them putting their building six foot into the buffer, it impedes our maintenance, maintenance, what do you call it, just options, I guess you'd say. We, it can be mowed, it can be done, but with our normal equipment, it's not, not as easy to do. So, felt like that if that's the case, then they would, we would ask for them to, since they've impeded into that area, as you can see, the channel kind of is, is being improved. Have a flat bottom channel, three-to-one slide slopes, three-to-one kind of side slopes over here that are, they're all going to be mowable, much easier to maintain, much better at conveying water, that's the whole point of the project. So, it's going to be a lot better when it's done. Shouldn't be terribly hard to mow it, but the bottom line is our normal, you know, equipment with our boom mowers and our larger mowers, it's not as easy to get in there this way. So, what we're asking them to do is to maintain that along their building. So, they've agreed to that, said that'd be fine. Zoning administrator has confirmed that this doesn't, doesn't require any modification to the no-build easement, so it's, it doesn't mess that up at all. There's still 20, there's, there's more than 25, there's 25 feet here, so 25 feet, we put it, you know, over here a little ways, so the six foot doesn't impede that at all. Opposed solution here is, is in agreement with a lot of, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six different options there on page three of the blue sheet, starting basically giving permission for it to be there by the Slane Airport Authority. They can do, you know, Storage Mart can do any kind of work to their building, that gives them permission to paint it and to do whatever necessary repairs that would have to happen in that, to their building as it, long-term. If the building were to become dilapidated or need be removed or need taken down and rebuilt, then they'd have to, number two there is to build it on their property. So, then it would go, this kind of would go away. Third thing would be to maintain the buffer and the side slopes, as we talked about. Storage Mart will need to maintain that, mow that area, kind of at the same level the city does, so that's a big, big question. It's not easy to mow drainage channels. We haven't ever mowed that one before, so, but we do have to come up with a way to mow it and kind of maintain it to keep the drainage in check, keep trees from growing up in it. So, we'll, we'll figure that out, and then they'll kind of be required to mow it at the same level, whether that's a couple times a year. I mean, right now, we mow the levee three times a year, so it's not a massive obligation, but it is, it's something you have to deal with. Indemnification, of course, here number four is, I just asked, that's just a lot to read, so. The city attorney helped, helped us with this. Really, I should give him the, he helped with the blue sheet. So, Greg was a big help with this blue sheet. He's been kind of working with the Slane Airport Authority, with Storage Mart, with city staff to convey, to get this worked out. Grant of easement, I guess to, Jacob, if you could throw up the picture there a little bit more. We are going to get an easement on the north end of their property and the south end to access this channel a little easier, which, which is beneficial to us, helpful to us, and they were able, they, they said that'd be fine. As you go down here, let's stop at one thing, just next, next one here, Jacob, yeah, right there. This is a picture of some cross-sections through this area. Go to the next one. As you can see, the, we had, Wilson and Company did our drainage analysis, 100-year storm, so it's, it's a fairly large storm, but it, their building isn't really in, it's not in the 100-year storm. The channel's going to convey things, it's going to be fine. So, we don't, we don't have any reason to believe it's, you know, going to wash out their building or their foundation or anything, but either way, they're indemnifying the city from, you know, any kind of damages to their building. So, I just want to kind of clear that up. We're not trying to set them up for failure here by keeping it there. And then keep going, Jacob, I'll show you the easements. There's the agreement, the, kind of the, this area is, we'll keep going, actually. There's next page. There is the ALTA survey, so for the, for the process to go through, they're actually selling this property. So, they had to do an ALTA survey, so there's a lot on the ALTA survey, as you can see. And then last page here, keep going, Jacob. Let's see again, again. ALTA survey again. So, I don't know if we got double in there. Here it is. This is, there's a 20-foot easement on this north end and a 20-foot easement on the south end for us to get our equipment in off of Schilling. Where up here is along Aeroplanes, kind of the Aeroplanes area, that's the area we're at. There's a levee here at the end of Foxborough where you could easily get in and maintain the channel too. So, it's helpful for us in the long run to be able to have that. So, that was something that's part of this agreement. And lastly, the Slane Airport Authority has already approved the terms contingent on us, subject to the city's approval, so. That's a lot. I'll stand for questions, and Greg is here to help me answer any that are more, more legal related.
Okay, I'll look to my right for questions?
No questions.
I've heard a lot of questions and comments about clearing the trees out.
Yep.
And, yeah, so that's all easement and...
It is, 75-foot easement in there, and it's, tree, it's a tough one, because, yeah, like trees are a nice buffer, it's hard to just go clear all the trees, that is tough, and...
And this is all in conjunction with the improvements down on south on...
Correct.
Schilling Road and it's kind of...
Schilling, yeah, Schilling, Centennial Road, drainage for Schwans, it's really, it's really to help alleviate... really to help alleviate flooding on the Schwans property, the Centennial Road.
And it's going to end up in Dry Creek.
And it will end up on, yep, as we go to the north, Magnolia and Dry Creek. That's correct. So it's, it's interesting. We thought about trying to leave some trees. I mean, that was a discussion point to try to leave some buffer. And there may be a few that are outside the easement that we have to leave. But the bottom line is those trees just become a maintenance nightmare in the, in the future. The beavers cut them down, put them in the channel. So it's, it's, you're just fighting against some tough stuff there. That's exactly what we found in there. They were really good at damming up the channel, which caused us some problems for our drainage.
There were beavers.
So we keep the trees out of there. What's that?
There was beaver in there?
Oh, yeah. There's so many, there's so many, especially between Schilling and Centennial. You wouldn't have believed that. You couldn't walk through it. And there was, you know, three or four foot deep pools of water in there. And that's, that's really why that place didn't drain. I mean, that's the bottom line. So.
And as a point of clarification, that, that was a known area that caused flooding that actually flooded Centennial and interrupted traffic flow for Schwans in the industrial airport area. So our standard, as we have new development, is they have to detain and discharge at the same rate. So it's not to say that it was for Schwans. It certainly was.
Sure.
To facilitate that project, but it was not a result of their expansion. It was really an opportunity for us to get some EDA funding to improve an existing drainage problem and discontinue our disruption of their operations.
Correct.
A lot of the comments I heard, people thought they were going to develop something. That's why they took the trees out.
Other questions?
This is just a building that slipped through and we're just adjusting things. So every, everything's illegal now.
The alternative of take it down and start over didn't seem very practical. So we do, our, our code does contemplate that the city commission can grant permission to encroach on an easement. I think the intention is more proactively in advance, but in this particular case, we tried to protect all the, all of our interests, both liability-wise and access and maintenance-wise.
Yeah, we didn't get into how it happened there, you know.
The building's there now. I mean, you only got two options. Tear it down and work around it.
You know, didn't get the line right. I don't know. We just didn't, we didn't go there at this point. So it's, it's definitely a mistake in some, some regard years ago. It's not what you want to happen when you're building a building. That's, that's for sure.
If you have any questions for Storage Mart, I am here on that for Storage Mart. They're good.
Mr. Ryan?
So the, the drainage easement that's being widened, it is both in part of Schilling addition number five and Foxborough addition?
It's, I think it's all in Schilling number five. It's actually all on the Schilling subdivision number five.
Okay.
75-foot.
That, that's correct. The, the segment that we're dealing with here is, as plotted in Schilling subdivision number five. It's not being expanded. It's just being improved. And in the process, and again, I was going to mention too, that Clint Spiller is here on, representing Storage Mart. But in the course of the survey work that was done in anticipation of their prospective sale.
I guess I was confused. Looking at the picture, it, it goes into the easement or, you know, the, the easement area, but it really doesn't go into Schilling subdivision five, does it? Which is what the airport authority owns.
The encroachment?
Yeah, of the building.
Yes. It goes on to the airport authority.
It does.
Underlying owner of the property that is encroached upon.
I think I can help clarify that. The, the purpose of the no build easement was the desire of the Storage Mart developers to put the west wall of their building right on their west property line, entirely on their property. So as soon as you get west of their property line, you're in Schilling subdivision number five. So because they wanted to put a building on the property line and they didn't wish to fire rate the expanse of that wall, they negotiated a no build easement from the airport authority. And the airport authority wasn't really giving up much since it was a drainage easement anyway. So the airport authority agreed that they would not place any building within 25 feet of the west wall of the Storage Mart building. And that allowed Storage Mart to not have to fire rate that wall.
Right. And then, again, the, 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 the work that's being done to incre, you know, to, on the, on the easement or on the waterway is on Schilling subdivision?
It's all contained within the 75-foot easement that's on?
Schilling.
Schilling number five.
Okay.
There is no easement on?
On Foxborough. Okay. That makes more sense then.
Mayor, if I may, the only other thing I would add, and I expect commissioners noted it in reading the blue sheet, but just to be sure, as you probably saw from the proposed motion, the key consideration under the applicable code section is the first step are the findings made by the city engineer that the encroachment will not impede the flow of water. That then makes it possible for you to make your determination that its continued presence can be authorized, if that's your choice. That's the key question for you all. The agreement was simply to address the interests of all the parties, airport authority, city, during whatever period of time those buildings remain in place.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay. If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, we approve a motion adopting the findings of the city engineer and approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the proposed encroachment agreement and grant of easements in accordance with Salina Code, section 42-63.
We have a motion, a second, adopting the findings of the city engineer and approving and authorizing the mayor to sign the proposed encroachment agreement and grant of easements in accordance with Salina Code, section 42-63. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you. That will lead us to item development business, item 7.1.
Item 7.1, consider a request from the Overland Property Group to have phases two and three of the Lee Lofts project designated by the city commission as a project of exceptional community significance, making it eligible for a 95% property tax rebate for 15 years.
Mr. Andrew. You're walking better.
I can actually move. The property located southeast corner of Santa Fe and Elm Street is known as the H.D. Lee Hardware Company complex. That has all been purchased and is now owned by the Overland Property Group. And they have plans to turn that complex of buildings into a loft apartment development. And so their plan, which has been completed for phase one, was to put 53 apartment units in the north building, which is phase one, 50 buildings in the south building, which is phase two, and then connected to and south of the south building is the warehouse building. And they were proposing to put 32 units in that building. They have gone to all the city's boards and commissions for regulatory approvals. So they have all their approvals for construction, but they've decided to move ahead with phase two, which is the south building and 50 apartment units. And so they have submitted a building permit application, which has been issued. And along with that building permit application for phase two, they submitted a neighborhood revitalization tax rebate application. And they're requesting that the city commission designate phases two and three, the remainder of the project, as a project of exceptional community significance. And that would make it eligible for an enhanced property tax rebate. So we're under our standard program, the rebate program is, if you have a historic or older building that you're renovating and it qualifies, you can obtain a 100% rebate for years one through five. And then that's reduced to 50% in years six through 10 and runs for a period of 10 years. A project that's designated as a project of exceptional community significance would be eligible for a 95% rebate that would run through a 15-year period. So the origin of that dates back to 2018. There were extended discussions and negotiations about a package of financial incentives for phase one. And Flint Hills Holdings Group, which was the lead developer on the project and had done some loft development in Lawrence, suggested that, and one of their projects in the city of Lawrence, they received a 95% property tax rebate for 15 years and requested that the city consider amending its neighborhood revitalization plan to provide for such an incentive. And so when our updated plan was adopted in June of 2018, it was updated to add a section for projects of exceptional community significance. And as part of that, the commission asked for there to be some criteria. So there would be ability to evaluate projects on a case-by-case basis. So at the top of page two of your report is the five criteria that were incorporated into the plan. And so as part of the 2018 financial package, the city commission determined that phase one of the Lofts project met the criteria for exceptional community significance. But at the time of those discussions, the scope, the timing, everything about phase two and phase three was unknown at that time. So there was no determination made for the rest of the property. So now that we have a application for phase two, Overland Property Group is requesting that you make a finding that their phases two and three meets the criteria to be a project of exceptional community significance. So the way staff has looked at this is that even though the project is broken down into phases, it, it is a single lead developer. It's an integrated, integrated development. It's all being done by the same owner and developer. And so we have summarized on page two, bottom page two and page three, that if we look at page, or if we look at phase two and phase three in the aggregate, they're proposing 82 apartments in those phases and 135 total in terms of blighting influences. These were vacant, deteriorating warehouse buildings that had not had a productive use for some years. And Overland Property Group is putting them back into a, a reuse that's productive and beneficial to the community. Their total investment in the Lee Lofts project will well exceed $10 million. And the Lee Hardware Complex is on the National Register of Historic Places. So this project will result not only in the preservation, but in the redevelopment of this historic building complex. The other criteria had to do with vacancy. And this, this warehouse complex sat vacant for well over five years before the renovation activity began in 2019. So in terms of the fiscal impact of this decision, if you were to approve this request, the city of Salina and other taxing entities would still receive the base amount, but wouldn't forego the increase in property tax revenue attributable to the increase in assessed valuation from the construction improvements. And that increment would be rebated back to the property owner. And this would occur over 15 years. Once the 15-year rebate expired, the full amount of assessed value and property taxes would go to the city and the other taxing entities. So along those lines, I was going to just give you the illustration of what happened in phase one and kind of the mechanics of how the rebate program works. So the Overland Property Group submitted an application for phase one. The county appraiser determined that the phase one building and, and land footprint had a value of $89,350. At project completion, after a certificate of occupancy had been issued and the building was occupied, the county appraiser set the valuation at $1,221,030. So with the 95% rebate, 95% of the increase in taxes between an $89,000 property and a $1.2 million property would be rebated back to the owner over that 15-year period. But the, the part, we would still be collecting taxes if it was, as if it was still worth $89,000 plus a slight increment of 5%. And that would, that would run for a period of, of 15 years. So that, that's what they have for phase one. And they're requesting something similar for phases two and three. So with that illustration, I'll give you your options this evening. The first option would be to, by motion, designate phases two and three as a project of exceptional community significance. And that would make them eligible for phase two and phase three when it came forward for that enhanced tax rebate. You could postpone consideration of Overland Property Group's request to a future meeting date. If there's additional information you need from the applicant or staff, you would need to include the date of that meeting in any motion. Or you could decline at this time to designate this as a project of exceptional community significance. If that option is chosen, because this property is within the rebate area, it would still be eligible for the standard tax rebate, but not the enhanced 15-year rebate. So we believe a finding can be made that the Lee Lofts project meets the criteria that you've established in the neighborhood revitalization, revitalization plan. And staff would recommend option one. I'd stand for any questions that commissioners might have.
Look to my left, Commissioner Ryan, any questions?
I have a question. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate place to ask it. It sounds like the criteria for exceptional community significance would be met, but to concerns, this refers to rehabbing the building. But does the impact upon the surrounding community of that finished product influence, as in particular, I'm thinking of parking. I know parking requirements for downtown buildings are less than non-downtown ones. But, you know, it's great to have the building brought back into service, but if we negatively impact surrounding residents and businesses without a plan, yeah, yeah, the building is a significant improvement. The neighbors might not think so.
So there was. And this project was unusual from the standpoint of your appointed boards and commissions that it went to and was reviewed by the Downtown Design Review Board. It went to and was reviewed by the Salina Heritage Commission. And then it also went to the Salina Board of Zoning Appeals. And so they conducted a public hearing and we sent notice out to all the neighboring affected property owners. And they, as part of the project, they don't meet the strict number of parking stalls off-street that they would be required to have. But there were two things that occurred. One, they provided some data about car ownership and city-go use, as well as periodic photographs from staff and the developers. And so the, the existing off-street lot that they have is, on average days, less than half-full. And they are also constructing an additional parking lot across the street on a vacant lot. But there was, there was a public, advertised public hearing and notice was provided to neighboring property owners about their parking plan. And none of the neighboring property owners came forward with concerns or opposition about their parking plan.
So from that comment, they're anticipating the need for additional parking and taking steps?
There, on the, the site plan that you have in your packet, there's, there's a parking area that is, is along Fifth Street that's east of the complex of buildings. And then they have acquired a lot on the west side of North Santa Fe. And that lot is vacant. And they're planning to construct a parking lot in that lot to provide additional parking.
Right. So a large event downtown on a Saturday night. Right, so, a large event downtown on a Saturday night would not keep residents from finding a parking place or?
No, they, they are, as a condition, they were required to post the lot on the west side of Santa Fe, that it was for Lee Lofts residents only, so we didn't have customers at the Voo or places like that using that lot and preventing residents from parking there.
And the other question, some of the units in the north building had issues with insulation and utilities. Again, the building looked great, but the quality of life, or the financial quality of life, particularly for the market rate residence, was not that great because of the lack of proper insulation in the summer or winter, and that created large bills. And again, building looks great, it's not that it wouldn't meet the criteria, but is this the place to ask that group to revisit what they did in the north building, so it doesn't happen in the next two buildings?
Yeah, I don't, as a staff member, I'm not aware of any of those concerns, or at least having been expressed to us, but this, if that's something you want us to raise with the developers as they're looking at Phase Two, we can do that. As it, as it relates to the three phases, just for everyone's benefit, the negotiated final mix in Phase One is that they have 35 rent-restricted apartments in Phase One and 18 market-rate. They're planning to do 50 affordable apartments in Phase Two, and then their plan for Phase Three is that all 32 apartments in Phase Three would be market-rate apartments. So, their proposed mix is 85 affordable and 50 market-rate.
So, with respect to the utilities, I want to be clear, we can, we can relay that concern. I'm not aware through the NRP program or otherwise, but we have any authority to require them to take a different approach as it relates to energy efficiency.
Right, it technically does not, you know, these five criteria would still be met, but?
Correct.
Don't want to push something that looks pretty, but doesn't work. And, you know, having been on the inside of one of those units, and the wind's blowing and the curtains are blowing, but the window shut, there was an insulation problem, and it just needs to be, or a window problem, I'm not sure what the problem was, but they should be familiar with it. I would just, again, this might not be the place to, to bring it up, but.
If, I'm not aware of us having a provision or authority to condition this approval on?
Right, and this might not be the place for it, but.
Right, I, I think it's more of a discussion and a point to raise with them, but they maintain their discretion and how they wish to respond to that, rather than us making it a requirement of some sort.
Right, but big concern was the impact of the parking on the neighbors, and it sounds like provisions.
I think that is more in our wheelhouse, from a code standpoint.
All right. Okay, that's it. That's it.
Am I right? Ah, this is kind of related, you know, I support this project, I think they've done a really nice job. Have the developers and utilities evaluated whether we have utility capacity for another 85 units right there?
In terms of, you're speaking to the city's utilities?
Yeah, like water, sewage, and, and the power.
I can't speak to power or gas, but in his task, or the Director of Utilities, and the Fire Department didn't have any concern about either domestic water or fire protection?
So, there's plenty of water supply and?
Yeah, I think early on, there was some discussion more so about storm sewer and some connectivity and some improvements to be made from a capacity standpoint, but I'm not aware of any, and which were addressed. I'm not aware of any water and sewer capacity concerns.
Because there's, there's water in both Santa Fe and Fifth Street, so there's, there's water supply on, on both sides of the block, and they have hydrants on both sides of the block. And the sewer is an eight-inch line that goes right down the middle of the?
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking in terms of the people on the top floor having water pressure when they take a shower.
I remember that being a topic in conversation as well. I don't recall if they had to put in a pressure boosting system or not, but I know that conversation was ahead and that assessment was made.
It just seemed like adding another 85 to, that's a lot of people.
Well, there's gonna be, there's gonna be entirely separate service for the south building than there is for the north building, so it'll have its own independent tap on the, on the water service, and the same for the third building. So, they're not, they're not sharing the same tap in terms of, the water supply for Phase Two will be independent of Phase One.
They give you a ballpark timeframe on these phases?
Well, I believe that they were looking to try to finish up some of the work on Phase Two before the end of the calendar year, because they've, they've had their permit, and they've been doing interior work for some time on Phase Two. Phase Three, they have not, they've got their regulatory approvals, but they have not submitted any permits or construction plans for Phase Three, so that, that one is unknown as far as timeframe.
Well, it'll be exciting to see these next two phases and their fruition. I mean, it's gonna be a great-looking project, and I guess hopefully they can fine-tune some of the customer service issues, which that'll, I'm sure it's an in-house issue, but I think it definitely meets the criteria, I'm all for it.
On, on Phase Two, I heard you say affordable, but are those market, are all those 15 market rate?
Those would be rent, rent-restricted. They're going, as far as I know, try to use the low and moderate income tax credits for Phase Two, but Phase Three is supposed to be 100% market rate.
So, okay, because I originally thought mark, Phase Two is market rate, but they will be, will not be?
Yeah, what they have, what their architect provided to me was that Phase, they're not, in Phase One was mixed, Phase Two, their, their request was to use tax credits for all affordable, and then Phase Three was supposed to be all market rate.
Okay, I may have had it backwards, so.
So, it's, the final mix by my tally was 85 rent-restricted and 50 apartments market rate.
Okay. Okay, with that, are there any questions or comments from the public? Okay, if not, I will bring it back to the commission fraction.
Mayor, I move the City Commission designate Phases Two and Three of the Lee Lofts project a project of exceptional community significance, making them eligible for an enhanced 95% 15-year property tax rebate.
Thanks, second.
We have a motion as second to designate Phase Two and Three of the Lee Lofts project a project of exceptional community significance, making them eligible for an enhanced 95% 15-year property tax rebate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 5-0. That will bring us to Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, approved resolution number 23-8133 in support of Southview Estates LLC with Southview Estates Housing Development to submit a Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credit Application.
Mr. Skoll.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. As you may remember, we first talked about this particular program, KHITC, or Kansas Housing Income Tax Credit Program, in February. The program is ran by the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, the public corporation set aside by the state of Kansas to administer state and federal programs around housing. This program is fairly new, it came out in 2022, it was originally connected to MIH applications, it's now on its own, the state has it set up on a three-round per-year application cycle. The goal of this program is to reduce income tax liability for housing investors proportional to the awards, awarded credits, has up to 13 million available in tax credits for qualified housing projects located in counties of less than 75,000 residents, we would be included in that. From statute, depending on the population of the county, and up to 35,000 per unit in credit can be earned. The developer also has to be based here in Kansas in order to get this. This is not a program administered by us or applied for by us like MIH, this is just a resolution of support being sought from the commission for the Southview development.
Mayor, if, if I could interrupt, just, I'm very sorry, Mr. Skoll, I just realized that I believe I recused myself from Southview on the last, I don't know about this particular granting issue, but because of family conflicts events, my wife is a realor, I think I should recuse myself from this discussion.
This body more recently acted on this in February 13th of 2023, when you had three requests for resolutions of support in front of you, one for the Aeroplanes Development, one for the Brock Road Town Homes, and one's for Southview Estates. This was round one of the 2023 applications, we are now coming up on round two. In round one, only Aeroplanes was awarded the KHITC. That means Brock Road Town Homes and Southview did not get awarded in that first round. So, Southview is in front of you again today, asking for your support as they apply for round two of this program. The housing development's product has not changed, they're doing single-family residential and town homes within that development. This body has supported an MIH for that project and an RHID, all part of the development agreement. Previously, we've talked about the developers looking to come back and maybe address some issues within their development agreement around timelines and how quickly the product is selling related to interest rates and other things like that. Staff has been working with the developers, particularly as schools been letting out, they've been kind of looking at how quickly product is moving and things like that. They are still looking at and would like this KHITC application as kind of part of their full economic incentive package to really make that project work. There is no fiscal ramification to the city, I'm not administering a program, nobody in the department is. This is really just a resolution of support for them to go forward for that program. So, before you, you have Resolution 23-8133, and that is for the resolution of support. You, as a body, can either approve the resolution, or you can approve the resolution with amendments and further direction. You could postpone consideration and give staff specific information on how you'd like us to move forward, or for vote to deny the resolution and provide additional direction, but that would mean that the applicant, Southview Estates, would not be applying for the second round of this grant. I believe there's representation from the development here, and I stand for any questions.
And this is for Phase Two, correct?
Yes.
Right.
For Southview, yes.
For Southview, they're?
So, second round of applications for Phase Two.
Phase Two, okay. Okay.
No questions?
Questions?
Just one, if we were just describing how this project would be unique in Salina, you know, meriting our letter of support, how would you describe that?
Well, I would say it would be the same way we merited that letter of support in February, that it's solid workforce housing, it's already being constructed and built, the product is currently available versus some of the other applicants that you've supported, that product isn't built yet. They've actually come in under the price points that were identified in their development agreement, so from affordability perspective, our housing plan identifies this type of product and this price point as highly desirable. So, I think all those things are relevant to what the KHITC program is looking to incentivize.
And kind of the same criteria for RHID as well. We reviewed them for workforce housing price point, that type of thing, to designate them for the RHID, so it's really kind of down that identified path of our housing study of, of housing product that we're trying to incentivize.
And I said Phase Two, would this also be, because I think there's three phases at Southview, so would this also be for Phase Three also?
I don't think it's necessarily prohibiting them from using it in Phase Three. So, they're asking for the whole program.
Right.
So.
They've already completed Phase One.
Correct, so they're starting to put in infrastructure to justify the other pieces, and we have them on a phased approach, so as the infrastructure becomes available, they can start to work through their other phases.
Yeah.
And actually, the development agreement doesn't lay out Phase One, Two, and Three, it lays out from the date of this completion, you have to have this many town homes and this many single-family. Once you have that, from this date to this date, you have to have that many. So, what we consider phasing?
Right.
Isn't necessarily what the development agreement's asking for, it's really about production of product in a timely manner.
Okay. And have they stated, will this, if they're awarded this, will this affect the sales price of the current, of the properties they'll be selling? Did they mention that at all?
They haven't indicated that, but it's no different than the request they made in February, which was not to alter that price point, which they are significantly under what they had originally come in for their development agreement. So, I think from that perspective, that they're holding up that end of the bargain.
Okay. Okay, any questions or comments from the public? We've got a quiet group today. Okay, I will bring it back to the commission fraction.
Mayor, move to approve Resolution 23-8133 in support of Southview Estates LLC to submit a KHITC application.
Second that.
We have a motion as second to approve Resolution Number 23-8133, a resolution of support for the Southview Estates LLC to submit a KHITC application. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 5-0.
4-0.
4-0, thank you very much. Okay, could we bring Commissioner Ryan back? As Commissioner Ryan makes his way back here, does anyone have anything under other business they'd like to bring up? I'll start to my right.
I don't have anything.
Somebody? Nope.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, anything for the?
Other business?
Yeah, under other business?
No.
Okay, staff?
Nope.
Nope, okay. Well, with that, that will bring us to Citizens Forum, this opportunity for citizens to come forward with comments they may have. We will ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Norman, I'm Salina. I've got your code of conduct here, you five ought to look at it. My question is, you ask people to fill positions, vacancies on committees and boards, but yet we're not allowed to vote on these issues, so why should we serve? We don't have any say in it, you don't even listen to us. Access to the tennis courts, they won't answer the phone. On the issue of the landfill issue, the lumber, I understand there's gonna be a reused center set up, maybe, so is that gonna be competing against private enterprise, or you're just gonna give that lumber away? Because if somebody goes into business selling it, you're competing against private enterprise. So, you don't have any policy regarding that? That's about all I got, I guess.
I've got one more. We'll look to City Manager Scrag on the tennis, if you'd like to address that, please.
Sure, so, for a couple weeks now, the tennis courts have been, and propped open, available, available for public use. We, as we, as park staff and our contractors, open and close the restrooms, or opening and closing the tennis facilities, that still creates a time block at sunup till then, and then later in the evening where the courts are available and the gates might be closed. In those instances, there is a PIN code paste, posted on the fence, same code all day, every day, that will allow public access, and the whole point of that is that when it does come time to, for the gates to lock, that can be done automatically remotely. So, basically, the, the courts are available for public use for the operation hours of our park system.
Okay.
And have been for a couple weeks now.
Thank you for the update. Yes, I, I was there.
I called them, Mike.
I didn't say anything about the phone.
You don't need to call, the gates are open.
You don't need to call anyone, you can walk on the court.
Gates aren't open, you can grab them.
I was there today, they were open, I saw them.
I personally verified it.
Not going to argue. If you go walk over there now, I bet you can go walk on the courts.
Okay, the access to them, are they handicap accessible? You can't get a wheelchair in that gate.
Yeah, you can.
No, you can't, not the speed ones, not the speed ones, the wide ones.
They meet ADA, the facility meets ADA.
Well, it's...
We actually, as a punch list item on construction, had to rework a ramp to make sure that it complied with ADA, but it complies with ADA.
Okay, thank you. Follow, so is there any way to reserve a court ahead of time, or is it all open unless there's a tournament or something?
I don't know about the software, and STA is working through a staffing change, so that may be one hiccup, but it is available for walk-on play.
Yeah, the one thing we were concerned about is the accessibility, so that has been addressed, so we've tried to address that.
Don't make Dallas, Salina. So I don't know how many of you, the Fettmal crisis that, from what?
The what?
The Fettmal crisis.
Oh, okay.
KBI Director Tony Mativi, the other day, put a deal out. It is coming to Kansas, it is going to Western Kansas, what is the city willing to, I know this is more of a law enforcement, KBI, Kansas Highway Patrol, Sheriff's Department deal, but your parks and rec that clean up downtown, personally, I think it'd be nice to have them carrying Narcan for themselves, because they're, I've had contracts downtown, I know how bad it is downtown. There's drugs everywhere, if you look for it, you can find about anything downtown. And I think it's a safety issue, and I don't know what your guys is, if you could look into doing, certifying park staff with Narcan, PD already has it. This morning, earlier, actually, before lunch, there was a overdose downtown. I don't know what, but, and then, Santa Fe looks nice, Fifth Street looks nice. Can we do some stuff on Seventh Street, like buy your office, Mike? There's a bunch of weeds in the cracks and all that, they're spraying them, but that doesn't deal with the weed issue, and this makes it worse, because now the weeds are still there, but they're dead. Is there any, I know the, I know Public Works is short-staffed, I know Parks is short-staffed, I don't know if they go through the parking lots with the sweepers when they're downtown on Sunday nights, or whatever nights they do that. But is there anything we can do to help with the weed problem downtown? And then there's a bunch of overgrown bushes and stuff that are in the sidewalks.
Thank you. Those weeds next to sidewalks down, they're treated the same way as the, oh, the sidewalks in front of a residence? I mean, it's the owners?
We take responsibility for the beds, and I think we also take responsibility for spraying those. We'll need to follow up on terms of, once they're dead, removing them, but in the downtown, we take maintenance responsibility, more so than a residential sidewalk.
Yeah, and I don't remember, I'll have to look, I don't remember seeing a problem in my neighborhood, so...
It's been an ongoing conversation with City Manager's Office, Park Staff, in terms of our contracting for that work, staff efforts, stump grinding, just...
As far as the sidewalks and stuff downtown, SDI has an individual now that does, and I don't...
We've divided up responsibilities, so I'm not prepared to say.
Between the beds and the ramp, but I don't know how that goes as far as, you know, the sidewalks, and then of course, you know, sometimes you have some stuff in the streets, you know, and so...
My first reaction is that would be City and Park Staff, and that's on their radar, but we'll just double-check what's being done and how effective it is.
On that topic, the Broadway medians continue to be a problem with weeds.
Yeah, and we've looked at those both in terms of treatment of the weeds, as well as aesthetic improvements of the medians themselves, so...
So, okay, next.
Ken Ritz of Salina, possibly with weeds, they should, you should just smoke them. Anyway, making light of a dark subject. Yes, I remember last week, mention made of scavenging from things going into the landfill, and in the last six months or so, I've noticed several articles in, there are several good recycling publications that have been around for decades, of businesses, of the expansion, extension from thrift stores of used material. There's a commissioner who, whenever recycling was mentioned for any period of time, would come in with pointing out that recycling's all very well, and it is, I hope, needs to be, but that it's third on the, low on the totem pole, and it's pretty obvious that Americans are not going to reduce. That's just, the rest of the world that is, of course, obviously inferior to us, they can take care of that. So we have to start with reuse, and you may not remember it, but on Fourth Street, it's been some years ago, little kids play baseball, and it was the old Long Bell lumber building on Fourth Street, was a building material revival center, and they had lots of stuff, but if you go into a lumberyard or hardware store, five thousand square feet doesn't begin to cover the waterfront. And so people got discouraged, they might go find one thing one time, and then go a number of times and go, well, it's the wrong size, it's the wrong color, they don't have it at all, and as I got to thinking about it, that would have been a much better use for the Kmart building, both inside and outside, and they're, they wouldn't be competing as those folks certainly are with existing businesses in Salina. But yes, that's, if you've got twenty-five to fifty thousand square feet, you can do a credible job, and in other parts of the country, that's really getting going. Used lumber, all, I don't, I think we could use more than one, there's just so much stuff in the world. The concern that I have is with leaded paint on lumber in general, what's going to the landfill, lead is something that's just kind of dropped out of sight, and it shouldn't, especially for little kids, it is, it is just evil, and so, anyway.
Thank you very much, and let everybody know, we do have a hazardous waste facility that's open every, I'm going to take, I'm going to take a shot at this, every Thursday, and is it the first Saturday of every month? How do you like that?
Pretty good.
I was impressed myself, yeah. So, yeah, so anybody has paint, any materials like that, please take them to the, to the, to the...
It's demolition waste that I'm concerned about. There's not lead in paint, hasn't been since nineteen ninety-eight, so...
I'm just letting everybody know, we did have a hazardous waste, so, okay, thank you, thank you.
But, but, but...
Anybody, anybody else have anything for the...
House is now.
Anybody else? Okay, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn.
Second, who's in favor?
Aye.
See everybody in two weeks, correct?
Correct.
Correct, two weeks. Yep, next Monday's Memorial Day.